Call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. This is the regular school board meeting of the Edina School Board of June 12th, 2017. Rick, could you walk us through the agenda, please?
Certainly can. We did have some special meetings prior from our last May meeting until tonight. We had a special meeting that addressed some work agreement, or excuse me, some contract issues, not issues, but bids for the construction project on May 22nd. On May 24th, we met with the city council and actually toured the high school. On the 5th of June, we had a special meeting to approve the graduates list. It was a great graduation, so we thank the high school administration, the graduates, families, staff for that great event. And finally, just before we began tonight, we did have a work session where we reviewed a community survey results of this spring, as well as talked a little bit about the 2017 operating levy and school start and end times. Those are the minutes, or those minutes will be addressed later in the meeting. As we move into things, we'll have hearings from our audience members. We have some consent agenda items. Several of those agenda items are because it's the end of the year, including employment agreement. We have a property liability insurance with Minnesota Insurance Scholastic Trust. It's actually a reduction of 5%. We have a health and safety budget for two years of $1.3 million, $1.2 million. We have the performance goals for the superintendent included in there. We have a budget adjustment from this current year with a .4 reduction in revenue and a .08% reduction in expenditures. That totals about a $500,000 adjustment. We have an alternative compensation report. We'll hear more about that at the board meeting later in the evening during the report session. We do need to identify the identified officials for the school district through the Minnesota Department of Education, that being John Schultz and also Executive Assistant Sarah Shandell. We have a purchase of paper, technology purchases. We move right on down through gifts and field trips. And then we move into the report items where we'll talk a little bit about the alt comp and teacher evaluation. We have some leadership updates. We do want to spend some time giving the board and the community an update on our construction project, as well as getting an update on our secondary programming, grades six through eight and nine through 12. Those are not action items. We have policies that we'll be doing first reading, and then we move into the action portion of the evening where we take a look at participation fees. We did talk about that at the May meeting, but this will be a chance for the board to approve those fees upon public hearing. We'll take a preliminary approval of the 2017 budget. Amande land purchase sales agreement, that's a walk-in item that's coming as it relates to our land sale. We have some long-term facility maintenance budget. And then some purchases through teaching and learning around math, reading, and world history. Finally, our policy review. And that would conclude the business for tonight's meeting.
Great. Thank you very much. The first agenda item is approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 15th, special meeting of May 22nd, and special meeting of June 5th, all 2017?
Second.
Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes of May 15th, May 22nd, and June 5th, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have hearing from the members of the audience. We do encourage members of the audience to come and speak. We ask that people keep their comments to three minutes or less, and that they do not make comments about individuals who are employed by the district or working with the district. And with that, I will call my first person, which is Jim Doudier. Pick up a microphone.
Thank you. I don't know if what I'm about to say just disqualifies me, but I'll go ahead and you let me know if I'm getting too far afield. I wish to share my thoughts about the employees' service agreement between Dr. Dressen and the school district. This is a consulting contract. In my experience as an executive and as a consultant, someone hires a consultant to acquire knowledge one does not have and cannot easily find. By signing this contract, the board must believe that Dr. Dressen has some knowledge about the school system that is very valuable and that he has not shared with his coworkers, and that he is willing to do so only if he has paid a handsome sum to give it up. I don't believe that. The way I see this contract, you have managed to insult just about everyone involved in the transition to new superintendent. First, you insulted the new superintendent, Dr. Schultz, by implying that he is not capable of learning anything else he needs to know without the district paying a significant sum to acquire it. I find this strange because Dr. John Schultz is someone you went to a great lengths to find, and you chose him because you felt he had superior experience and knowledge in being a superintendent. Surely, anything else he needs to know, he is capable of figuring out after being a superintendent for so many years at Hopkins. And I think this contract insults Dr. Schultz further by making him the supervisor of this agreement. Therefore, the more he uses Dr. Dressen's time, the more he is admitting he needs this kind of hand-holding during the transition. And this undermines his attempt to become the head of the school district based on his own merits. Second, I think you have insulted Dr. Dressen by putting him in the embarrassing position of having to charge the district $744 per day for sharing his "certain institutional knowledge and information," referred to in the contract. Surely, without this contract, the two of them could have a cup of coffee and talk about anything that needs to be shared as colleagues. After all, Dr. Dressen has spent years building the Edina School District into the powerhouse that it has become today, and he should be proud to help his successor carry on at work without charging for it. Finally, this contract insults the taxpayers of Edina. I suspect neither Dr. Schultz nor the members of the school board will be paying for any of the costs of this contract that has a maximum payment to Dr. Dressen of $11,160. So who is paying for this? Isn't the district, which has already paid Dr. Dressen handsomely over many years to acquire his storehouse of knowledge, entitled to ask him to share it instead of paying for it a second time? The voters are watching your stewardship of their funds as we approach the operating referendum. Is this contract an indication of lax financial management?
Thank you. Next speaker is Erica Allenberg.
Hello.
You're welcome.
Thanks. In general, I guess I just have a question regarding the same topic, and I'm confused as to why the board is recommending that Dr. Dressen receive both the $9,000 for his bonus to be fully funded and receive an additional $1,160 in consulting money. The two payments seem to me to be redundant. One of Dr. Dressen's three performance goals is to "enhance student learning through the construction plan," and a sub-goal of this is "to have fully implement the EPS Next Generation Learning Experience and Construction Plan." Under actions to fulfill this performance goal was the requirement to have "developed and implemented the administration execution of the next generation construction plan" and ensure the construction plan is moving forward "on time and under budget with a completion date of 2018." And since the Human Resources Committee is recommending fully funding the bonus, which is great, and I certainly don't begrudge that, it sounds like everyone is in agreement that he fulfilled the role of implementing and executing the next generation learning plan. And this begs the question to me, why the district is now hiring Dr. Dressen as a consultant to "provide for summer construction project continuity at seven different school sites." I don't see how both of these statements can be true. Either the goal of implementing the construction was fulfilled, or it was not. I would also like to add that given the unique situation where Dr. Dressen is leaving one year early of a construction process that will end in 2018, and knowing that our new superintendent will be starting before summer construction is over, it would seem that some thoughtful foresight would prevent any need for expensive consulting. Things listed that he is to be consulting for are "providing information, background and leadership context, and information regarding past issues." This seems like something that should be done during a normal job transition. Another one is "responding to information requested by the district." Again, this seems like something that with a little foresight could have been planned for, or something that a good faith effort, the district could have mitigated the need for payment from the district. I also know that Dr. Dressen surrounds himself, and he himself is a very highly competent person, and has a highly competent team that has working knowledge of this project, and I would hope that they would be well-versed in this project to help with any issues that arise. And given this transition would also, and given that, this transition would also have been fully briefed and prepared with the transition plan. If this consulting work is something that the new superintendent specifically requested, that would be nice to know, because I think our community would wholeheartedly support him and getting, him getting the knowledge that he needs, but the request says that it's coming from the administration and the school board. I guess I'm really struggling with the decision of our board to spend over $11,000 on administration consulting services when our district just had to go through a budget reduction process that cut $750,000 from our district, much of which impacts our classroom. Every dollar in our district obviously matters, and I would just like to hear the justification for this additional money that we're spending. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Eliza Raffers.
Hi, my name is Eliza Raffers. I just graduated from Southview, and I will be going into 10th grade at Edina High School. My idea is about showing teachers appreciation. I came up with this idea because one of my eighth-grade teachers, Mrs. Kobani, had a profound impact on me, so much so that I nominated her for WCCO's Excellent Educator, and she was chosen. They came to school and filmed it. I presented her with the award, and it was on TV. It meant a lot to her and to me. I would like to start having our schools have a Teacher of the Month. The students would be the ones who decide instead of the adults. This process will allow students to have a say, and also by doing that, they will be able to recognize teachers for their hard work, and teachers will be given the respect and credit they deserve. We need to start having our youth realize the importance that teachers have on their education and their lives in general. As I've dug into this information, I have found that often students spend more time with their teachers than with their own parents. My intent is to implement student-selected Teacher of the Month in the high school before bringing it to other schools. I've talked with people who are part of the PTO at other schools who are willing to help us bring this to a bigger audience. I'm asking for your participation to promote this as something that will unite us as a district. Thank you for your consideration. I hope by working together on this, we can honor our hard-working teachers. If approved, I'm more than willing to be the student representative for this movement.
Thank you very much. We do not have any other speakers. I'm going to break from tradition a little bit and answer a couple of the questions that were asked by the first two speakers. One of the questions that came up, or one of the concerns, seems to be that this is taking operating money. I think we need to be clear that the funding for the contract with Dr. Dressen going forward is from the referendum funds and could not be used for the classroom, so it does not take out of the classroom. And it's part of what the district has already set aside for various fees that might be incurred as part of the construction process. So with that said, I'm going to give a little bit of background, which is, the first time that this question came up about whether we might want Dr. Dressen to stay after July 1st came up in January of this year, when he announced that he was going to be moving on at the end of June. And that question came and was brought to me, and what I did with that was I went to Margot Bach, who is our Director of Business Services, and I asked her to put together a list of what type of services she believes, with Eric Hamilton, who is our Director of Building and Grounds, what services they thought we might need, so that in January we could start to plan for the summer and for the fall. Eric and Margot put together a multi-page list of work that we expected to happen over the summer, because a lot of our work happens during the summertime. What we did with that list is we actually held that list until a superintendent was chosen, because one of the questions that we had was, will the new superintendent be able to fulfill some of those roles, and what's the new superintendent's perspective on whether it makes sense to the district to have a consulting agreement? So after Dr. Schultz was hired, Margot and I sat and met with Dr. Schultz and went through the multi-page list of items and actually winnowed it down significantly. And what we decided was that there were a few things that it made sense to have Dr. Dressen available afterwards. It was part of Dr. Schultz's request that Dr. Dressen be available as a resource. Based upon the meeting between Margot, Dr. Schultz, and myself, it was then brought to the HR committee, discussed, and the HR committee supported it. Now, why is it important to the district to have Dr. Dressen stick around? So he has a lot of experience and expertise in running this project. He has been the main contact person. There are a lot of decisions that come up, there are a lot of issues that come up. If you could imagine remodeling a project that costs $600,000 or $700,000 or building a new home, and multiply that by 20 times, you can imagine the number of issues that arise during the construction phase and during the transition as we move into the high school. So the view was that his expertise and his knowledge was important for the district. And from my perspective, and the perspective of Dr. Schultz and Margot, we thought that the district would be remiss to allow that opportunity to gain that knowledge on an ongoing basis. So what we did was we said, okay, let's set up a system whereby we have access to Dr. Dressen. This is not a contract that says you're going to get paid X dollars, period. This is an availability contract where if his services are used, if they're needed, he has committed to being available. So he's not taking on other work that will preclude him from being available to the district. So what we have is an as-needed basis. I do not anticipate that the district will use the number of days allocated, but we have to pick a maximum number. And so from my perspective, this is something that's helpful to the district and of great benefit to the district. I also want to note, this agreement actually doesn't require board approval. This is something the administration could have done on their own. It's within their purview. This is something that we elected to put as part of the consent agenda so that the public would understand that we had a resource out there, and that we were going to make sure that we had access to that resource. And that, yes, there would be a cost within the referendum fund, but it was a cost that we believe is justified. So those are my answers. I hope I've answered the questions. Margot, did you have anything to add?
In addition, what I would just add, I'm not going to reiterate what you said, but certainly, how we have structured our process internally with, overall with the bond referendum and the construction, is it has been a team effort. All of us, to include Dr. Dressen, have taken on additional work, and a variety of us have additional expertise in that area. And we have, we will continue to support Dr. Schultz in the transition, and each participating in that. Some districts, rather than doing it that way, hire retired principals or experts on special assignment, or have a current principal on special assignment and hire a principal all year long to cover the construction. We did not do that. We did what I just said, in terms of everybody taking on a little bit more. And so that's how we did it. So we don't have somebody on special assignment to be able to continue moving forward with this. Second, our projects are based on the summer work, which can be challenging with fiscal year-end, which is June 30th. That's employment contract year-end, but it's also our fiscal year-end. But we have a project that Dr. Dressen has been intimately involved with to get us to the start of school. And in visiting with Dr. Schultz and the HR committee, I felt it was really key to have that expertise available to help assist us with getting to the start of school as needed, so that teachers and students and other staff, we can ensure a smooth start to school. And whether it's furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, where did my box go, those kinds of things, just as part of that plan, as needed. And so...
Okay.
That was our background on it, and I would answer, and again, concur that it would come out of the construction fund.
And the only other thing I would add is that Dr. Schultz has attended facilities meetings and construction, and at least one construction meeting as part of the process of bringing him up to speed. And so it was based upon his knowledge through that and what we imparted to him, that we were able to reduce the list and make a decision as to what made best sense for the district. So with that, I want to thank everybody for their public comments, and we are going to move on to the consent agenda. Is there a request to remove anything from the consent agenda?
I just have to follow up. I don't know if you want to do it now or pull it out and talk later. Question?
On the consent agenda?
On the item we were talking about, which is on the consent agenda.
So a consent agenda item isn't discussed. If you want to discuss it, you have to request that it get removed from the consent agenda, and then we would add it as an action item later on.
Because we were just discussing it, I didn't know if you want to just continue that, or if you want to have it removed from the consent agenda item, and we'll talk about it later.
So I was responding to the comments, which is not tradition, and so the question still remains, which is, do you want it removed from the consent agenda?
Yes, please.
And which one is that?
The employee contract.
Okay.
Is there a second?
No, I think that when, I think, no, you don't, when there's a request for removal, then it shifts down to an action item. Any other items that people want removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda without item?
G.
G, thank you. No, not G. Thank you. B. Thanks, Sarah.
Sorry.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. We are on to reports and discussion. The first item is...
Can I make a motion?
Oh, yes you may.
Motion to amend agenda to insert, under reports and discussion, item E, recognition of Dr. Rick Dressen, and an action item under item G, recognition of Rick Dressen. It's simple, straightforward, pretty clear. Nothing too dangerous.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the motion to insert as a discussion item recognition of Dr. Dressen as E, and as an action item, G.
And do we need to add, did this have to be added?
I think it just moved down to F.
It just turns into F.
Right. So any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the motion to amend the agenda as set forth, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, now we are definitely on to reports and discussion. That would be Rick.
That would be me. I'm going to ask Randy Smazel and his team of players to come forward and give an update on our Edina teacher evaluation alt comp plan for this past year. Jim Hawthorne, Libby Sandvik, we all welcome you to the meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. Chair Wallen Friedman, Superintendent Rick Dressen, our school board members, our community members. We're excited to share with you just an update around our alt comp report, our Q comp report, rather. Each year, Minnesota statute requires an update of Q comp for the current year to our board and to our community. And part of that update is just discussing program strengths and growth areas and sharing progress in that program. And we're going to speak a little bit to the value of our cognitive coaching model, how that has tied together with evaluation of teachers, and then some next steps, where we're going next. And just to note, the future reports around this topic will be incorporated into the World's Best Workforce Report per legislation, so this will be the last time we'll be reporting this separately. And in the future, it'll go into that World's Best Workforce Report. So that is my introduction, and I'm going to also turn it over to Libby Sandvik, who is our teacher evaluation facilitator, to speak to a little bit about our implementation, some of our survey comments. And then we, I'm sorry?
Would you mind just clarifying the two programs, because you just mentioned World's Best Workforce?
Sure.
And then the alt comp, and maybe just clarifying what that is.
Sure. And I'll ask Libby to speak to that in a second. And we have here one of our peer coaches, Mr. Jim Hawthorne, who's been in the role for a number of years as a peer coach, has worked with hundreds of teachers, and has done thousands of coaching sessions. And Jim just has a lot of insight regarding the program, the feedback from teachers, what he hears, what he sees in terms of growth and development, some stories to share, and he's a very funny guy, so here we go. You, Libby.
Thank you. So this is our third year in the state of teacher evaluation, and to your comment about what is the difference between Q comp and teacher evaluation, we've been a Q comp school for nine years, and you opt into the Q comp program, whereas the teacher evaluation program is required by all districts according to state statute. We've rolled our Q comp and our teacher evaluation program into one to streamline it for teachers and to make sure that they're recognizing that both programs are there to help improve their craft and also to improve student achievement. So this is our first year, 1617, under a new memorandum of understanding between EME and the district. And with that new MOU, we updated our teacher evaluation rubric, eliminating three descriptors from the past two years, so teachers are working with 16 descriptors over three years. The new rubric has identified standards of proficiency for each descriptor, so in order for a teacher to be marked at a proficient level, they need to meet all the standards of proficiency for that particular descriptor. We've continued our administrator-peer-coach-inerator-reliability trainings over this past year. We had four separate training sessions. Gina Spoo conducted two of those to give the coaches and the administrators some common experience, common language around CLRT as they work with teachers. Our peer coaching team continues to meet weekly, not only to address nuts and bolts of the program and ensure program implementation fidelity across the district, but we also spent time working on our team IDI every month, and had some individual sessions too with Gina Spoo to ensure that our coaches were best able to support teachers around CLRT in their classrooms. This year, our coaches had over 4,800 meetings with the tenured staff within the district, and that is goal-setting meetings, observations, conferences. Our teacher evaluation committee, which is really the oversight committee for the program, continued to meet monthly this year, and that committee has four district representatives and four EME representatives on it, and those monthly meetings allowed us to address issues as they came up pertaining to the program. We continue to use TalentEd as our online data management system, so teachers, administrators, and coaches access TalentEd to complete all program responsibilities. Continuing again this year, we have the same three incentives that we've had over the past nine years. So there is an observation or professional growth plan incentive in which teachers need to reach a level of proficiency over five descriptors at a minimum of three observations. A student learning goal incentive, in which teachers focus on some aspect of student learning, monitor it throughout the year, and the incentive is awarded based upon their implementation of the goal. And then finally, there's the site goal, which is site-based, and the results of standardized assessments are used to determine if that site met their goal. Our teachers are continuing to find value in the program, as was evidenced in our annual program survey. This year, that was administered on April 10th as part of the Site Staff Development Day, so principals graciously gave our program time during the day, gave teachers time, to complete that survey. And this year, we had 401 teachers complete the survey. In past years, it's been about 120. So we had much better results this year. And what we found with more people completing it is that over 93% of teachers said they agree or strongly agree with the statement that my participation in the program helped me grow as a teacher. And when asked what effect, or, I'm sorry, let me restate that, 91% of teachers said that the program had a positive effect on student achievement. So I think that continues to show that teachers are finding value in the program. There were 126 survey comments. Four of them are reflected here on this slide. And again, are positive, both with relationships with coaches, the work that they're doing in the program in general. The one of note is the second one here that I appreciate the honesty in. It feels like an extra thing that needs to get done, but after each round, I'm always happy about the outcomes and appreciate the intention of having time to pause and be more reflective. And that's really what the program is about, having intentional conversation with teachers about their practice and the ways in which it impacts student learning. We asked a new question this year on the survey, which really is supportive of the work that principals and coaches do with teachers to help advance best practice. In answering the question, based on working with my peer coach or principal, I tried the following strategies to help improve student achievement, and teachers could pick all that apply. About 70% of respondents said that they, or identified engagement strategies. The second most common answer was the CLRT strategies. And I think as you look down that list, you'll see that that list is reflective of both our staff development goals and the goals of the district. Jim Hawthorne here is a veteran coach in the program, and he's going to share some specific examples of work he has done with teachers this year and last year.
Hi, I'm happy to be here. My job is to just give you three different stories about sort of life in the field. And so I would like to share with you a couple of my experiences working with teachers. Remembering that our job is to help teachers enhance their professional growth so that they can increase student achievement and student engagement. My first one, my first story is linking coaching to... My first one, my first story is linking coaching to changes in the classroom. And I'll be very vague, so we don't out any teachers on their discussions, but one department, I had a chance to work with them, and descriptor number two addresses standards and how we link standards to student achievement and student learning. And one particular aspect of it, actually the second half of it, talks about how we need to state learning goals in student-friendly language, and there's a lot of research behind when we tell our learners, when we let them in on what we want them to know, they have a much better chance of knowing what we not want them to know. So, seeming quite obvious, but, but we have a lot of discussion around that. In one of my conversations with a, with a staff member, they were very diligent about showing me the agenda for today and all the things that we're going to cover during the day. And through discussion, we had this conversation that weaved its way through, is that really a learning target? And what is your student's will statement? What learning are they going to take place? Not what are you going to do, what the agenda for the day is, but what are you going to learn? And so, it was a great discussion, and, and left that, had the post-conversation, it was great. Another person from the department, I go in to have that meeting, and they're like, hey, can we come, can we talk about descriptor two? Because in our, in our, in our staff collaboration meeting, we had this discussion about descriptor two. And so, again, I had a chance to work with some really veteran teachers that are accomplished fantastic teachers in our district, but how do we get ourselves better? And focusing on learning targets by use, use of the descriptors made that possible. Story number two. Story number two links to, part of our job is to be a conduit for district mission and district initiatives. Most importantly, probably, it's personalized learning, our PLCs and our CLRT work. My second story is working with a teacher who is working on bringing voice and choice to the classroom. And they were perplexed at how to offer a chance for students to be able to share, it was a foreign language classroom, share individualized reports back out to a group setting, but it took too much time, it had, it had some issues around it, and through our discussion, I was able to help suggest that maybe we could use our cellphones, and that every kid has a cellphone, and inside each cellphone is a digital audio recorder, and could that possibly be a way that you could help achieve your personalized learning as well as hear the language and be able to share that out in, in various formats? And so, in our post-conversation, talked through that, and she said, sounds like a great idea. And to my surprise, and, and I had completely forgotten about this discussion, because it was the last year, she invited me to observe a class of this year in which she was using the cellphones and had become part of her, her best practice. And so, I was encouraged to see that she'd taken that and kind of ran with it. My, my third story, and probably, I think, perhaps even the most important story, is about use of culturally responsive teaching and, and all the equity work that we've worked so hard at in the last 10 years to try and help our staff. I was observing a, an intervention class with a very small group of kids, there were seven kids, and the teacher was trying to help them to discover that Wikipedia doesn't have all the answers, that you had to sift down in there and look for the stuff at the bottom which links to these original sources. And he used the analogy of Hansel and Gretel and leaving breadcrumbs and followed the breadcrumbs to the, to the source. However, out of the seven kids there, only six of them were, or six of them were from Somalia. And it was just one of those things we do, you know, it was a great idea, and, but by having an observer in the room, I was able to be his ears outside of that, and we were, had this fantastic discussion about what learning could we have taken from that? And in the meantime, from the observation to our post-observation, I was able to visit with Abdul Abdallah, and asked them, asked him, is there a similar story in your folklore? And I was able to get a story, and so, when we sat down to our post, and, you know, it was a great conversation, and, and he was like, oh, I didn't even think about that, and never occurred to me, and, and I was able to offer up a story that perhaps he could have used. And then, as we discussed, we even talked about, maybe that could have even been an opportunity to actually share the story of Hansel and Gretel, which is a, you know, a German story, and be able to just share some culture that way as well. So, it, through our training, we've been able to have an opportunity to not only grow our own skills and equity and culturally responsive thinking, but also help our, our staff grow in. Those are my three stories.
Thank you. So, as we move into next year, in late fall, we will be pulling a group together to revise our MOU for the 2018, 2020 years, and we will be talking with various stakeholders in the fall to try to identify what the areas of growth are for that MOU. We'll continue our interator reliability training with our administrators and our coaches. We already have five meetings scheduled for the 1718 school year. Our coaches will continue to walk that fine line that blends coaching and evaluation so that they're best able to support our teachers. I'll continue to work with TalentEd to make sure that it is best meeting the needs of our teachers, our administrators, and our coaches. And we have a transition in our team. In the next year, we have three new coaches who will be coming onboard, so that will be some exciting time rebuilding our team and moving forward. So, thank you.
Just would like to publicly thank you, thank Libby Sandvik for all of her work as a teacher program facilitator. It is an impressive body of work that she has done over the last five, six years now to really continue to shape and lead this program to make it highly effective, and the feedback from our staff through the surveys are great evidence of that. I'd also like to publicly thank all of our peer coaches who have worked with 80 teachers per coach throughout the year, multiple meetings with those coaches year-long, constantly focused on continuous improvement. So, it's a great structure and a great opportunity, and we look forward to continuing to figure out ways to make it even better moving forward. With that, we'll ask if the board has any questions.
I want to start by thanking you as well, and having had the opportunity to watch the implementation of QComp and then its evolution into blending the program with teacher evaluation, the growth is phenomenal, and I've had the opportunity to join some of the evaluations and observe. This is a win for students and a win for teachers, and I know that that's come because of a lot of intentional hard work. So, please continue to let us know how we can support this work, and I share that thanks.
I was, I was just going to ask, because I love hearing the stories, and the few times that I've sat in on some of the annual meetings to hear the stories shared, the teachers share their stories of how this work is helping them. Do you ever do anything to share your stories across the staff? So, a story without, you know, disclosing who people are, but, you know, I had this interaction so that it might spark something in another teacher to want to have that type of interaction, you know, with their coach?
Yeah, in fact, we do that a lot. We, we share them with each other, but also then, if I'm sitting down with another staff member, I, when, when appropriate, I can say something like, you know, there are some things that I've seen in some other classes, would you be interested in hearing about that? And then I could-
Great.
I usually put that in a cognitive coaching framework, and then I'll maybe say two or three things, are any of those things you'd like to know more about? And then dig into that way. But yeah, we do a lot of sharing. We, we feel that we're a conduit for information, because we, we have such great staff, and I'm in a very fortunate position where I get to see a lot of that great staff's teaching. And to be able to share that with other teachers, it's a, it's a very unique position, and I feel that's one of our jobs.
Yeah, because I think, I think one of the hardest things, being a teacher from, from the outside, is that they are very much, you know, in their own world and doing their own thing, and we all know that why we have, why we give time so that they can collaborate is so that they can improve. So, anything we can do to continue to support that, where they can share those great ideas with each other, and the inspiration is just something we want to support.
Yeah, one, one other way that we formally do that is, is one of our observations is a peer observation, and so, lots of times, if there's a particular thing that they're interested in, I'll try and hook them up with another teacher who's maybe doing something similar to that for their peer observation.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And I think one benefit of our weekly meetings is coaches are able to have the conversation among themselves, either, here's something I'm struggling with, here's something I've seen, so that that knowledge and the new learning extends past just the 80 teachers that one coach is working with. We also partner with 10 districts in the metro and have area coaches meetings. Edina has hosted it about the last seven years, and this next year, we're going to be moving on and having trainings across the districts with our coaches to try to learn even more from one another.
That's great.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much, that's just great.
Great job, thank you. Jim, Libby, Randy.
Thank you.
Next, do you have leadership news?
Just, yeah, again, reflecting back on mission which drives our work, we've tied into three words, all for all, and our vision work that we have started in 2012, that we're really moving on this journey actively. As the last two years, we've been implementing initiatives, but preparing for fall 2017, so we've made very steady progress on this. But as we look at this in 2017, 18, it's likely the district will be updating its strategic plan and saying, what's our next vision? How do we continue to grow that? But we focused on three areas around personalized learning, comprehensive programming, it's really gone now birth through 93, because that's the oldest participant we've had, and, and then the partnership work that we've done. So, we've made those progress steps along the way, and we feel good about the progress we're making. I really do feel it's been about the mission-driven focus that we have, that our staff really appreciate it, that our parents and our students really know how important that is, the partnership. We focus on all kids and prepare for their future. This purposeful planning piece, we hear about it tonight, an evolution from QComp, which was a standalone program that stood by itself, that's now been embedded into our evaluation, and now, next year will be embedded into our staff development program, that we really have that purposeful planning. That's just one example of how we continue to do that. This drive for continuous improvement, that tomorrow will be an entire day dedicated to all our sites, working on their school improvement goals, and setting them up for next year, assessing where we've been, and then driving them forward, that we're bringing our gap plan and, and embrelling that into our school improvement process, that we had a very aggressive plan this year around several initiatives, and we're, we're building on that, not that we've made a perfect reach on that. Engagement piece is very important, engagement of our students and their learning, the engagement of our staff and the community along the way. We find again in the survey that we heard of at the work session earlier today, the importance of community involvement and community engagement. But I really do believe this is the magic that's moved us forward as a district and been excited to be a part of it. And then our last piece is the whole thought of resources. How do we make sure our resources align to that mission? And that again is our challenge area and our opportunity area. How do we use time differently? How do we use staff and our talent differently? How do we use our volunteers differently? How do we use our community in new ways? How do we use time? And how do we use funds? And then how are we going to use space? And the space door is really going to open up for us this fall as we look at the different types of space, different types of learning furniture for our students, and I, I really think that's something we need to celebrate, that we've really advanced this work. We've called it next gen Edina Public Schools, and I think we'll move past that now, that we will just be launching into a new school year, and that tagline will probably be exiting as we continue to move forward with 1718 and then into the strategic work. But we have been focused as a community, that's been our theme this year. They're included in the board report today as a summary of our big three goal items, and I think this is an important one for us to end on, is the pull of unity. There's too much that is there to pull us apart. This is a community that really strives to be together, and it's good to get voices in the room to have us sort this and problem solve and stay focused on the kids. But that would conclude the leadership update report. We're going to move us right on to the next gen report unless there are questions.
Next up?
We've got a team of players here today. Von Dirks from Wold Architects, been our lead architect. Chad Rutke, who is with Kraus Andersen, our construction manager, has been their point person. Susan Brott, who's our communication, done a lot of front-end design work. Margot Bach, obviously watches our dollars and cents and very active, also oversees the building and grounds program. Eric Hamilton's been engaged around that, and I kind of complete that team in this effort. Steve Butner's also part of this team as he rolls in with technology, but with that, I'll turn it over to Susan to start moving us through the system.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dressen and, and school board. We are actually quite excited to be here to provide you with some progress updates, and so, what we wanted to do was just to kind of circle back to May 2015 and remind everybody where we were. So, the community generously supported us with a referendum, and so, we wanted to kind of talk a little bit about what were those key pieces of that facility's bond in 2015? And they were those three key themes of transform learning spaces, infrastructure improvements, and security and enhancements. And we'll be kind of going through each of those a little bit today, focusing a lot on those transform learning spaces, because that's where the most dirt flies, you'll see, but we also have some infrastructure improvements. We want to review all that's happened since 2015, the progress and the schedule. We'll talk a little bit about budget, although I know Margot, Margot has more on budget in her budget presentation to follow later this evening. And so, but I do want to turn it over to, this has truly been, as, as we were just talking about, truly been a partnership of not just us, and I know Eric's not here, and there's many of us that every Tuesday afternoon, we get together and we talk about construction, so it's been a great learning curve for me as a communications person. I've learned a lot about construction over the last two years. But these two gentlemen to my right, Chad Rutke and Von Dirks, Von with Wold Architects and, and engineers, and Chad with Kraus Andersen, have been really steering us through a lot of this and have been valuable players, so I will turn it over to them.
So, from a design standpoint, it was very important when we started the process to look at how are we attacking all the projects holistically? And so, rather than look at building by building, we brought all the core planning groups together for all the elementary schools to move forward as a group before going into site base. We did the same thing with the middle schools. We really started the planning process entirely with the high school in the summer, right after the bond passed. In schematic design, we worked with core planning group members that were not only staff members and students from the building, but also community members to look at how the buildings would work. As we moved into the next phase, where we went from schematic design into design development, we had user group meetings with staff throughout each of the buildings to look at how the spaces needed to function, and those designs turned from two-dimensional into three-dimensional. We had started to see renderings, we put materials to the project, and we continually looked at cost estimates compared to design scope to make sure that we were not only on budget for one project, but all the projects across the board, and making sure that we were addressing the referendum needs in the design layout for each of the buildings as we went forward. From there, it was working with Kraus Andersen as we developed our construction documents to make sure that what was bid and started to be built could be phased out in a manner that would allow for successful implementation as we went through the projects, but literally, between your staff and your community, hundreds and hundreds of people involved through the process from the start of it to where we are today as we went forward.
Yeah, so, we kind of get, we, we got involved, because Kraus Andersen, to work jointly with the district and partnership with Wold early on, and as Von mentioned, a lot of our, our process in the design part was to make sure that we're aligning the, the pieces of, it's the city requirements with the district requirements and what the, what the referendum requirements were, making sure that all those were put together in the documents and that we're staying on budget. And that's the biggest piece, and there's a whole process that we work through to try and make those things align. And so, a lot of that is also making sure that we got together with the city, making sure that those are, all the requirements that the city has, the district has, are put into the bidding documents so that when we bid those projects, all the requirements are translated and there's no surprises when we get into construction. And so, then we went through a competitive bid process. We set up and administered a public bid process for the project that met the state requirements as well as the district requirements, and then we really moved right into construction of those and started with our pre-construction meetings, getting together with the contractors that were the apparent lows and who were ordered contracts, architects, engineers, city, district, and started the construction process at all the various sites. And so, now we'll talk a little bit about all of our various sites, and so, really to date, we've got about a little more than 80% of the construction projects in the referendum that are bid out and under contract right now, and we still have a few more to go. We've got, we've got, well, we'll talk about what's, what's left, excuse me, in a little bit here, so. So, the community center project here, really, the early, the early education and actually Normandale Elementary were linked together in a bidding strategy, and so, we had those bid together. One of the pieces really at this site, that's kind of, we pushed a little bit on the district. We've been working since before the first of the year in an occupied building, and, and we did that for a number of reasons, to try and develop as, as most competitive bids as we could and get the best pricing, because contractors want to work in the winter time. They're, they're, they got plenty of work in the summertime, so, so we pushed hard on the district to, to look at ways that we could work during the year. at ways that we could work during the year, shift spaces around. And right now, we're really just getting into the early education part of that phase, which was Phase Three on this project over the summer. Phase One was to work on the third floor areas to get the new district office areas ready so we could vacate them on second floor and get the Normandale Elementary classrooms going before school got out. And we'll get to that slide in a little bit. But really, we're starting down in the lower level, and demolition has went. We're only a week into it, but things are just rolling very, very quickly. So.
You'll see renderings, you'll see renderings attached to each one of these photos. So this is a good example of collaborative and extended learning spaces, spaces that aren't the classrooms, taking some of those walls down. It not only happens at the high school and middle school, but also at the elementaries and even down to the early childhood level. So you start bringing the parents in in that collaborative format with the instruction. In this building.
So Concord Elementary, so Concord Countryside, if you remember back, we had three of those elementaries linked together. And when we bid those, bids were not favorable. We went back and looked at that. And so Concord and Countryside, we kept together as a bidding strategy, but we changed the schedule, changed scope slightly, but really, a lot of it was just the schedule of when those additions were constructed. And so we started work on the additions at Concord and Countryside this last fall. The additions are, were completed, and they were used a little bit yet for the end of the school year, but those really were adding some classroom and making an extended learning area at Concord. And so you can see the previous picture there was one of the new extended learning areas outside of the additions where the classrooms are in the background there. So, and then at Concord, now the next phase at both Concord and Countryside is to get inside and do the interior remodeling at the media centers and some of the office areas, some of these security enhancements that need to go on. And so there's a little bit left at both those sites to get wrapped up this summer and turn both those projects over the end of the summer for use next fall.
These early elementaries, too, where we did mechanical replacement work a few years back, we had to anticipate, well, what are we going to be doing as part of the referendum work? Make sure that the work we did from mechanical replacement was prepped and ready for the future. And so it's a good example of that phased approach to not only design, but construction, and how to implement the projects over a couple of different years.
Yeah, and that's the, there was a two-classroom addition at Countryside that was completed and is ready for use for 17 and remodeling underway. Yeah, it's up at the media center, which is on second floor, turning that into kind of a more flexible learning commons area for the medias. Cornelia, this is actually, one of the pieces at Cornelia is we've got a joint effort from funding. And so there was already alt-facility deferred maintenance projects going on. There's bond referendum dollars. And so one of the things that we've done is looked at all the projects where there's facility needs on the deferred maintenance side going on, and how can we combine those with bond projects to get the most, you know, most value of those, of those projects. And so Cornelia was one of the ones that we bid together. So there's part of bond work and there's part of deferred maintenance going on. The bond work really was creating some additional space and remodeling to create flexible learning areas. And so this was also not just a summer project. We started over there in March and had been working diligently on the additions. And now that school's out, we've rolled right into the next phase, which is the interior deferred maintenance remodeling, as well as the creating of the flexible learning environments, as you see in the upper right-hand picture there. And so that project is progressing nicely and is scheduled to be complete at the end of the summer. Yep, so the picture you're looking at there was actually the old gymnasium in the middle of the building, which is being turned, being turned into the new media center and flexible learning areas. And that, that was actually taken over on the first week in May. And so we're about four, four or five weeks into that phase, and it's coming along very nicely.
The big addition that people may be seeing that would face
On the west.
West is the new gym.
That's the new gym, which the previous gym was about a little over half the size of what exists at the other elementary. So from a referendum standpoint, that equity component was important, but we also had the media center component. And so we were able to shift the new gym construction out, put the media center where the old gym was, which is now right inside the entry as you come in. And so that open learning space that was part of those media center designs will really be that first welcoming common space as you enter the building there.
And then Normandale Elementary, as I mentioned, that really is in conjunction with our early learning project. But the bulk of the Normandale Elementary was in phases two and three of the project. Phase Two was where the old district office was. That's going to be classroom space and the kitchen remodel. Again, pushing to try and gather space. The staff has been great and accommodating, and, you know, having the kitchen offline for eight-plus weeks was a little bit of a challenge. But really, that's the jump we needed to get going with that to ensure that it was ready to go this fall when, when the kids come back. And so we're really entering into that next phase at Normandale now, and the past week have really taken over that part of the school and are getting the demolition ready and doing the media center demolition, getting ready to make that, that new space happen. So, and there's a picture there of some of the classroom work that's on second floor in the old district office. So the middle schools, we have Southview Middle School is one of the projects that's bid out. And again, this was like Cornelia, is a combination of bond dollars and deferred maintenance dollars. And so this project is scheduled for two summers and the school year in between. And so we're just getting started really with that project right now. But they're well underway with demolition. And the first phase really is to create the media center remodel and some of those spaces surrounding that area, as well as get some of the main, major piping in, in the hallways to start creating that mechanical system changeover. And so there'll be a first phase that'll be completed and turned over in the media center areas this fall. And then we'll work back up onto the third floor of that building to work on that site over the school year on third floor, doing some of the rooftop units and some of those pieces. And then when school is out in the summer of 18, finish up the balance of the remodeling and the deferred maintenance items to turn that over at that point.
This is also a good example of the capacity component of the referendum and how it overlapped with other objectives of the referendum. With ninth graders going to the high school in the fall, that freed up space at both Valley View and Southview, buildings that were at their capacity, if not slightly over their capacity, going into these projects. And then that new space now could be used to loosen the building up a little bit, create those extended learning environments, and reorganize the building, for example, by moving the office towards the parking lot side of the building.
So can you just remind me, I think this is the picture of where the kids will come in off the bus?
Correct. This is the bus, bus entry for the building and student commons. It's centered on the north side of the building.
It's the north office side.
Yep.
It's the old horseshoe.
Yeah. Old horseshoe space, and the new office space will be on the south side of the building on the first floor.
And will that, that, just remind me again, is the outside area will be remodeled since all the buses will be there?
Correct.
Not where they're half and half at this point?
Correct.
So you'll have to redo that.
Half and half might even be a stretch. I think there's buses stacked up on all four sides of that building right now and around. So this will now put all the buses on the, on the one side of the building, stacked, stacked up in an angle in more of what we designed as a bus loop. It re-orients the office to the south side of the building, creates a stack-up area for cars for queuing into the site so that we can reorganize how early childhood works, how Normandale works, how Southview works, to try and create a more cohesive traffic approach to the east campus here.
But that's not till the fall of 18?
Correct.
And then we have our high school project. This is really one of the first ones to get going, one of the biggest projects in the referendum. And you can see there that, you know, this, this project has, has had some of its challenges. You can see in the lower picture, that used to be the temporary access out of the temporary student parking lot for the year. They're already starting to get going with the tiered seating that you can see there at the new entry. But that really is a, a good shot of what will be the new entry into the high school from the student parking lot area. And so that work will be ongoing. Again, we've got a photo there of, of the classroom addition, and you can see a lot of the flexible learning spaces right outside of the classrooms in those pod shapes. And, you know, the classroom areas are in really good shape on the high school project. And really, we're just waiting for some of the wall systems and some final touches there to get those wrapped up. So.
These are good spaces to align with what Randy and his team talked about earlier in the meeting, and new ways of looking at instruction and what students are capable of.
Yep. And then, again, a photo of some of the existing classrooms, opening them up to the corridors. That work is, you know, we're only three, four days into the remodel, and they're already going very, very quickly, getting those spaces put together and, and getting them back ready for school start. And another major component, again, media center work, you can see there, the upper left, that's the old existing media center area, only a few days into demolition, and a rendering of the, the new media center on the lower right. And that really is a spot, it'll be a challenge to pull all those pieces together, the media center, a lot of work there, but it'll all be wrapped up for school start.
I think one of the things in that photo you can see is windows in the background instead of a brick wall that was blocking the windows. So now it's daylight into the media center. Another large component of the project revolved around outdoor learning spaces, not only activity space, but also classroom space. And so those are going on in conjunction with the projects. We also have the Transportation Services Center, which was replacing the old bus garage, which was rapidly becoming obsolete in terms of its ability to store buses, to even pull buses in. That project is coming along very well.
Yeah, that's probably will be one of the first ones turned over here yet this summer. We're looking at getting in by early July in the office area and late July for the rest of the building. So that's coming along very nicely.
Sure.
So the, yeah, the, the field work there, there's a shot there of the high school from the, the new practice fields and looking back up at the existing high school there. And so that whole remodel area of the old fields and the new turf fields is coming along, and they're already getting very close to those spaces. There's some work to do yet to final grading and some stairways and other pieces there. But that whole practice area is coming along very nicely. The other, the other component at the high school, which is now over at the Creek Valley site, is the new tennis courts. And that project started up here in the last week or so and is going very smoothly. The goal there is to get the new tennis courts put in and all the work, except for the final coating, to be done this fall, and that'll be the spring after. And the east campus, the, the practice fields there, the two new ones and the replacement of the existing turf on the Coleman Field are, were done last year, and were in, into use last fall and are still being used very well.
Just to add a little bit to the, recall that some of the outdoor spaces as well, as Vaughn mentioned, would be some outdoor classrooms and some playground spaces. And so after the construction is completed, we didn't want to be working on playgrounds when we know that construction's happening and, and really waiting until all those construction is complete in 2018, and then we can create some standards. So over the next year, we'll be looking at what kind of standards do we want for our playgrounds. And there'll be some dollars put aside for the playgrounds. Obviously, it wouldn't cover an entire remodel, but we are creating some of those standards, and we'll be engaging each of the schools and the parent organizations as we move closer on that.
Yeah, so the, the new transportation facility, as I mentioned, a lot of that is more than just, you know, place for the bus garage, it's the maintenance area. But it's also, it's got some, you know, staff training rooms, office space, and so that's, there's some components of the, the new area, which actually, the lower right is the new area, which I think right now, we've got pretty much all asphalted and looks a little different than even there. But that's coming along very well.
And then finally, we wanted to talk about the security enhancements piece. And so we did do some piloting this fall, but I'm going to give it to Steve to talk a little bit more about the security.
Yeah, as was mentioned, the security enhancements are two major components. One was the entryways and the offices. And so that's part of the construction that's going on this fall in a number of the buildings. But another component is the technology. And so there has been technology in place for a number of years around cameras and door and intrusion protection. But we thought it was important that as part of this process is to bring together some stakeholders, to bring together the city, the experts at Wold. And so we did a large review of our safety and security and our technology, and we went out to bid on RFP, and that has come through. And now we're starting the construction on it. But before we actually start putting in new cameras, we're going one more time around to each of our buildings and talking to our principals and talking to the stakeholders to ensure that the technology's going in, because we wanted to do exactly what we need to do. And it's kind of our one-time shot here to get it done right.
We did some, some, especially at some of our elementary schools, we did do some piloting of some different approaches to security enhancements. As part of that, a lot of it having to deal with protocols and not just the physical and technological installations. But we did test one of the buzzer kind of systems over at Countryside. And actually, the, the feedback from it was that it went quite smoothly, and our, our front office staff really appreciated it, especially when you consider, now granted, the office is going to be moving, but when you consider the way it was before, that there's this large gap before you even got to the office, it helped control security a little bit. But what we'll be having is that kind of buzzing in after hours, and everybody kind of funneling through the main office area.
So really, coming through this summer, what, you know, what are the next steps? And this summer is going to be obviously a very busy summer. We've got construction, I think, at every site except for, I think Highlands and the existing transportation building, I think is about the only areas where there isn't something going on. But we've got a few things going into next year. Southview, obviously, as I mentioned, will be continuing on with its normal progression. And then we have the Creek Valley and Highlands Elementary projects to package up, get in alignment and bid out. And then we have the Valley View project, which, again, the Valley View, like Southview, there'll be some referendum, and there'll be a, a first phase of the deferred maintenance. Not all of it, like Southview has all of it packaged together. Valley View isn't the whole deferred maintenance. That has to be phased over multiple years. But we have those two, plus we've got the site work package at Southview yet to bid. So those three things, we'll be working on over the summer, making sure that we are getting the scope and budget, city requirements, everything in alignment. And then we'll be looking at bidding those out in roughly October. We don't have an exact date pegged yet, but sometime in the October timeframe, we'll be bidding those three projects and then bringing them back for approval at those points to get those moved forward schedules. Creek Valley and Highlands have some additions. And so we'll be looking at following a similar format of trying to get the additions going in early spring. And the construction remodelings will be in the summer of 18. Valley View, again, because of the, the space that we freed up, we're able to get going with the ninth grade moving into high school, we'll be able to start that project probably around the first of the year or winter break, and get started with there with a few different phases of getting some spaces done, turning them over, moving kids around to the new spaces, taking a little more, all with the, with the end in mind of, there really is not the ability to do the whole project just in a summer. So again, we're trying to phase that in, and, and I think that'll get the best interest in bidders and the most advantageous bidding climate we can for, for phasing. So.
So when you say we have 80% of the projects bid out, does that mean by this fall, then, that we'll have everything bid out, so that we'll have a real clear indication that, that we're all, you know, that the money is going to do what we had promised?
Yes, we'll have, we'll buy those next round of biddings at Creek Valley, Highlands, Valley View, and the site work at Southview. That is everything to bid yet under the bond.
Great.
Any other questions?
There's a lot going on, but it's
Yeah.
It was really wonderful to get an opportunity to see the high school, what was that, a couple of weeks ago, and just actually see beyond the renderings what that's going to be like. I think it's going to be really wonderful for our staff and for our kids.
Thank you, team.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next is Next Generation Secondary Strategic Update.
That's Randy Smazl and the team of principals.
That's Randy Smazl and the team of principals to join him and talk a little bit about our closeout of our next gen work at the secondary. If you recall, earlier this calendar year, we had the elementary team come forward and give an overview of our KG, K to five work. And this is both looking at the middle school as well as the high school work. So we welcome Randy and team administrators from high school and Southview.
Good evening again. I'm joined here by Assistant Principal Mike Protasky, Assistant Principal Jenny Johnson from the high school, and Principal Tim Anderson from Southview Middle School. And we'll start off just doing a little bit of an update on some of the middle school conversation. And one of the key questions that really drives our conversation is, you know, what does every child deserve to have in terms of a great middle school learning experience? And it's really a focus on how do we maximize growth for every learner and make sure that there are high levels of engagement for students as they're traveling from grade six through eight? And all of this conversation really started at about the time we were looking at moving ninth grade to the high school. And then it really did provide the opportunity to look at our middle schools differently and look at what do we really want this six, eight experience to look like? So our goal tonight is really to maintain awareness of these conversations and just share with you a, a little bit about what we've been dialoguing about in our middle school program design team. The middle school program design team was charged with examining the program and the schedule as directed by our guiding change document, which was approved by the board in the 2015, 16 school year. And we heard some great updates just previous to this presentation around some of the new spaces that are being created and planned at the various levels. And so it's really about how can we leverage that space to really continue to engage learners at high levels and really motivate learners to want to learn the outcomes that are designed for them at the middle level. We do have this middle school program design team, which is a combination of teachers and administrators from across the middle schools. You can see the list of staff from Southview, the list of staff from Valley View, a few of the district staff. This design team typically meets once a month for a couple of hours. And there's a variety of classroom teachers and administrators that participate in it. Some of the work early on included conversations around space needs and the construction plans. And when joined with a few other staff, we're able to provide some input to the construction plans that helped with the scope of the projects at both Valley View and at Southview Middle School. So part of our early work was informing some of the structural elements that needed to be incorporated into the construction design at those elementary schools. And then after that, we've been continuing our conversation around programs. And as Dr. Anderson completes some of his sharing, I'll speak to a little bit about the timeline and when we want to bring some of our options and recommendations to staff, to the school board, and to the community for discussion. We are not at that point tonight, but we just wanted to share a little bit of an update about some of the dialogue and some of the conversations that have been occurring in this design team. So I'll ask Tim to speak to what is our proposed vision and a little bit about some of the program topics that we've been considering, including a little bit about schedule conversation. So, Dr. Anderson.
Thanks, Randy. Board members, community members, guests, leadership team, it's great to be here. Part of what we wanted to share is just a sense of excitement. You saw these renderings on the board. And I know you've been privy to these over time. Not everyone has. And as we just embark on the construction season at Southview, we're finally getting a sense of the physical changes that match this design work that we've been doing on this team. And kudos to that group of people you saw who are giving extra hours, they're serving on top of their service, meta-service, we call it. And it's exciting to, to just get a chance to share a little bit about the work. You know, we had visitors, you know, the excitement that Eliza Rolfer shared tonight about, hey, can we recognize teachers? And I was just talking with some excited Southview constituents in the back this evening, you know, folks are engaged in their partners and they're excited about the work. And we had visitors this year from Cambridge Isani Schools at Southview about some of this personalized learning work that we're doing. And the stuff that we've been talking about on this design team, you know, when we play with those ideas at Southview, they heard about it, they already came to see us. So I said, you know, we're meeting in the place in one of the rooms that we're packing up with boxes. And, you know, the space doesn't necessarily yet reflect the kind of excitement, but the excitement of the professionals who are playing with these ideas and what they do for kids did permeate. And they were just blown away by some of the early stuff that we're doing with implementation. So excitement is one takeaway from this update, I think, that you should have. And we're really energized about the, the next steps. And so, you know, I was fortunate to be on a subgroup of this team that helped develop this vision statement that's there on the slide. And I know you know what vision statements are, being charged to help curate the vision and mission of this district. But for those, you know, just tuning in, it's a one-sentence statement, or in our case, maybe more than one sentence, describing a clear and inspirational long-term change resulting from an organization's work. And we're in the middle of the change, actually. We're, we're working on these ideas. But inspiration is what I'd highlight, that the folks who have early efficacy in this effort are feeling inspired and that translates directly to kids. And so that's pretty exciting. And so when we think about the vision and goals and when we've done that as a member of this team and a privileged member to be a part of it, we think, well, how do you make a vision statement operational? How do you make it living? And so the tenants on this slide, you know, the, the essential elements of the middle level experience, the common language across the system and across our middle schools, consistency. So it's not an educational lottery, lottery where you go, but that you have a guaranteed and viable experience around personalized learning, no matter what school you attend in our system. And equity, this all-for-all work, you know, access for all, those are the ways, the key tenants, that we make that vision a living and breathing thing for our kids. And, you know, that, that also means retaining the best of what we've had. So enhancing the impact of advisory, for example, has been a, a key part of that conversation. And so as we've worked on this, you know, this notion of making it a living, breathing vision for our middle levels, we've had these considerations across the conversation and in our design work. You can see, what's the alignment piece between our sister schools? Now, what, how might the schedule best support learning in this next 21st century chapter? You know, what are our course offerings? How are our power standards aligned? Where and to what degree can we have common assessments? What experiences do we want the learner to have? And I can't emphasize enough, kind of this hallmark strand of creating powerful learners has been a heartbeat of the discussion. What is the experience of the learner? What has it been? What is it presently? And what will it be? And that's where some of that inspiration bleeds at the top in these discussions and this design work. And then we can't forget about this, supporting our staff, because you can't just say, make it a 21st century or personalized learning experience without supporting the heck out of folks who are working super hard already, as Eliza testified to tonight. So in all of these, well, what can we agree to? Well, certainly similar, maybe not exactly the same, because, you know, French immersion exists at one side and not at the other. Where can we continue to take steps to sponsor that parallel structure that makes sense? And then really, I guess I'd highlight particularly this culture of collaboration that we've been building. A move away from, hey, schools competing against one each other in the same system, but how do we collaborate with each other to bring out the best and provide the best for our kiddos? So I'm excited too by that culture of collaboration that's emerging. So what else have we considered? Another huge consideration is the mission and vision of this district. You know, advancing personalized learning in a true middle-level school or a middle school grade six through eight. Not only from the architecture side, is more space freed up for us to create flexible learning, but our capacity is enhanced to further be responsive to learners. And that's a personalized learning tenet. So what will the required experiences be? That's been a part of the conversation. How will we, you know, really realize the impact of student voice and choice? That notion of student agency is also inspirational. So when I think back and when you think back to your educational experience, you know, what percentage of the time were you an active author helping determine the pathway? How much skin in the game did you have, so to speak? And did the system encourage that? That's been another exciting part to watch, the professionals in the room light up around, how can we take the next right steps in providing a space for learners or authors in their journey? And, you know, Eliza's experienced one of the spaces with Ms. Kobani, where we've been able to do that this year. And you see the impact it had on her and continues to have. She wants to continue to invest in recognizing spaces where that stuff's happening. So that's pretty cool. And one of the reasons I wanted to come to Edina Public Schools is because of this work. My doctoral work is on student engagement. Where do you find students most engaged? In spaces like we're endeavoring to create and already beginning to do so? So that's another exciting part of the work. We've also considered the role of electives for middle school students. And we've really explored this idea of a gradual release. So in the sixth grade, what's that guided choice? And what degree of structured choices might students have access to? And as they progress in the system and, and spend more time with these fine folks, how has that choice expanded? And how can we curate and care for those boundaries? And where can students help author? What is the right way to go? And then this notion of how do we expand and increase access to embedded enrichment and also intervention? We want to increase that stuff. And, and shifting and change can sometimes cause people to, to fear, well, hey, this shift is too much or there might be some loss embedded. The discussion is how do we increase the access to embedded enrichment and intervention? And so that's what we're designing for. And so that's exciting too. And, you know, all for all permeates this. It's the lens through which we look. We don't, we don't want to forget about any learner or their experience in this design work. And as you know, core competencies are a big part of the work. And so how do we marry what the state requires with what Edina values most? And what it's going to take for students to thrive in this rapidly changing world? And as a part of that, hey, core historical values in Edina, world language, math, along with the other interdisciplinary core courses, we have to preserve the best stuff that's present in all of those things. And I'm here to report that that has been the spirit of our collaborative work in, in this effort. Another consideration is certainly the daily schedule. What's it going to look like? And, and so you see the key bullets of that discussion. So which parts of the schedule best support what the research says is a good middle school experience? How do we have real-time interventions and enrichment in an expanded way? Where, where can we free up professionals to be even more flexible to meet the needs of kids in real time? So they don't have to wait for a certain class where certain things will occur, that that stuff happens as soon as we know about it. And that we're more active in diagnosing that in real time. And then, as I said before, adults need time to collaborate within that contract day. Where we don't have it, we endeavor to build it. And where we do have it, we want to further capitalize on it. Because our time and our resources are scarce. We've got to have those professionals collaborating during their contract time, because there's too many constraints outside of it. And so that's a part of the design. And with that, I would just say that it's exciting. It's inspiring. The spaces are inspiring, but the work is even more inspiring, because that's what translates and complements those spaces so that we make a bigger difference for kids. We're primed and ready to go. We're excited for the spaces to catch up with that. And these are exciting times for Edina.
Thank you. Some of the implementation constraints that we're looking at is just, time is one of them. We have a certain length of day. We have a certain amount of time during that day. And it's really what can we do with that amount of time that we have? Certainly staffing is another one, as we share staff either across middle schools and/or staff with the high school. There's, there's conflicts with our current schedule, but there may or may not be conflicts with the future schedule. But it's certainly a consideration is the degree to which we share staffing. And then the amount of choice in the daily schedule, trying to create balance between what do we require students to experience? And part of the middle school thinking is that there's some forced experiences, like we want students to try things that they may not have tried. Eat your broccoli. See if you like it. And then maybe you want more broccoli and more cauliflower and more other vegetables, but we want students to try certain things. And certainly, the dialogue has been a lot about where is that balance between what, you know, we ask students to do versus where students start making more and more choices about their future program? So I think that's a, that's been a rich dialogue for us. And certainly, there's a, an opportunity to grow that as students move from grade six to grade seven to grade eight and then on into the high school. So in terms of our next steps, you know, one of them was coming to you tonight and to our community to just say, here are the conversations we're having as part of this design team. There's, we're not presenting any formal options or recommendations this evening. There's no action. We're asking the board to take this evening on this, but it's just an update. In September, we do hope to come back to our staff and to our community and to the board and say, here are some of the options that we would like to get some feedback on. And gather that data, gather that feedback around these specific options and turn those into recommendations and then bring those recommendations forward for programming. The timeline on that is to hit November and December. That falls in line then with our registration process, which would occur in January as students, you know, move forward into designing the experience or taking, signing up for the courses they would like to take. And part of our process would require a phased-in approach so that we would clearly articulate, you know, what would we be phasing into for the fall of 2018, fall of 2019, et cetera? All of this discussion is really pertinent for programming for the fall of 2018 formally. So we're on a timeline to try to develop these options and recommendations to bring that clarity back around the direction, align it with the vision, with the strategic plan, and bring that again to our board, community, and staff later this fall. At this time, we'll pause and see if our board has any questions around the middle school conversation today.
Tim, can you just share your experience in your building from maybe the staff and student perspective on wind time? And was there a similar experience at Valley View?
Well, I think there was a similar experience. You know, some design differences were inherent at the beginning. So Southview, when I came on board, had made the staff decision to offer wind time every other week. And Valley View had decided to do wind time every week. And what we committed to though was being open to feedback and data and being malleable based on that. And so the leadership team kind of had a constant year-long formative data check about, hey, how is this going from the student's perspective, from the staff perspective, and even from the community perspective? So, you know, we didn't want to let anecdotes drive the whole thing, although they're important to consider. So I, I enjoyed some parent phone calls about some of our offerings. I also had the leadership team take surveys of staff periodically. I think three times this year we did that. And after our second data point, we made a decision to, to do a quick student check. And that data led us to, compelled us to offer wind as often. And of course, we were in constant communication with Sean and her team, who were, who were great to work with in that process. So we use that data to, to change how we did it. And then we've had already this summer, including this very morning, conversations about what tweaks might we implement next year as we continue to gather data for this 18, 19 landing place. So I think staff were, it's a nice problem to have. Staff were pining for more access to kids for wind time. And those are some of the same staff folks who at the beginning they were saying, I think every other week is fine. These same folks were at the end saying, actually, I don't feel like I have enough access to kids to do real-time intervention work or real-time extension work for, for kids who, who could benefit from more enrichment. And I also witnessed staff getting more creative and better at over time, how do we provide enrichment? Because the students demand it. When they have some access to that, and so do parents. And so we're getting better at doing that, because the market is actually asking for us to get better at that. And that's also a good problem to have. And so have we arrived at the ideal implementation? Certainly not. But again, we're accelerating in our efficacy and it's really cool.
And do you feel that, because I think the intervention, I mean, the extension is, is really important, but the intervention for, for when we see these kids who, you know, it's only the beginning of the, the first semester and we see, all right, they're falling down here and we, the adults, need to intervene and help, pick them back up so that we can see them succeed. Do you see this wind time making an improvement in that?
Yep. And yes, the teachers, and they feel that same way. It's part of what's leading them to say, we need more access. So again, we had the issue of Teacher O'Brien wanted to lock in students, some of the same students as Teacher Patzloff. And so it's a nice problem to have in that. I get to collaborate with those folks about how do we get these kids the interventions that they need? And then that informs next design. So what are we going to do next year? We're going to tweak the schedule to provide more flexible time for professionals to work that out. Because we can schedule it from an administrative solution standpoint, but in that case, you've got kids waiting or teachers waiting for access at a particular day and time. If we can free things up during the day to get more... If we can free things up during the day to get more intervention when kids need it earlier in real time, we're starting to hit 21st century stuff.
Thank you so much.
Onto high school?
Excuse Dr. Anderson at this time. Thank you, sir.
So if we think of a question later on, we're out of luck?
We have his phone number, so we can text him.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Certainly appreciate all the work, Dr. Anderson, Sean Dudley, our other assistant principals, and our teachers are putting into this process. It's very exciting. Moving on to high school and our high school conversation, thanks for waiting so patiently here. Staff and students are very excited about the opportunity for a 9-12 experience. And we've seen many of the plans earlier this evening. But as we move closer to creating that experience, it is a wickedly complex problem to solve around, first of all, who goes to the high school in terms of staff? You know, we have two new grade levels. That'll be brand-new to the high school next year. We have new space. But the exciting part is that we have so many adults that are part of the process in working on solving these problems. And I think part of what Mike and Jenny will speak to is that we have specific teams working on specific projects as we've parsed some of this work out, and we'll get to that in a second. I'm just going to speak to a little bit about the transition focus areas. If you can picture these six bucket areas that we started the year with. And one of them was to finalize the daily schedule at the high school. We did settle that with our school board, a seven-period hybrid block day. And the hybrid means that it really combines the benefits of a seven-period day with the benefits of a block day. So maybe two or three days being seven-period day and two days being block day. That also increases options for students in terms of course-taking and learning options during the day. And it increases collaboration time for the adults who are part of that schedule and incorporates a little bit more learning time for our adults because the learning needs are very intense in a modern educational system for our adults. We then moved on to the next bucket, and we looked at, okay, if that's our schedule, now let's look at what course changes and adaptations and modifications do we want to put in this year? And we do have some on the docket to come in the fall. So we did move those forward to the board in January. And then we also completed the staffing project, thanks to Dr. Jackson's leadership in HR of looking at the interests that people had in the different positions and figuring out, you know, what's needed and then who travels to the high school as part of the 9-12 staff. Our three remaining buckets, which are in progress, all of them are in progress, they're not necessarily complete, is to continue to work on the curriculum development and refinement. Again, Michael and Jenny will speak to that a little bit more. Another problem is what equipment and materials needs to go from the middle school to the high school? In some cases, that materials, those materials and equipment can be just moved. And in other cases, we needed to replicate some of that material and equipment at the high school level. And then the last bucket is just staff training around the use of the block schedule, how that changes the lessons, the format of their lessons on a daily basis, some of that work needing to be done. So there was an opportunity to do some learning from Chan Haskins staff, who have a similar schedule earlier this year. And so they did some work at the high school. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Jenny or Jenny to talk a little bit about the schedule and facilities, and then Mike will follow up with some of the curriculum development work.
Thanks, Randy. I also want to take the opportunity to thank the community, the school board, the district administration for supporting us in the endeavor to bring ninth grade to the high school. It's been an overwhelming task in planning, and the transformation of our school is amazing, as we talked about and saw earlier. But along with that transformation, I also want to speak briefly about the fact that our, the insides of the school, the students, the teaching, the learning is transforming. And we believe that it will continue to be transforming and never really finish that process. Because as students graduate from our school and new ones come in, they're different. And we need to be able to adjust and meet the needs of each student in terms of personalized learning, in terms of making learning the focus, and taking some of the emphasis off teaching like it's been in the past. So with that, we're very happy and very excited to look at how we deliver our instruction differently to meet the needs of our kids. And some of the things that we will experience and see is an increase in flexible learning space. From the commons area and media center, we will have over 10 flexible learning spaces in our school. Each department will have a space where they will use, based on their needs. We'll also have an updated media center and commons area, along with the cafeteria that can be used that way. We'll have a maker's space in the project lead-the-way area. And we hope to be utilizing those spaces and to enhance personalized learning and student learning throughout the school year. How we plan to use those spaces so far, and again, this is part of our transforming, is we will look for kids to have an opportunity to collaborate in those spaces. There'll be some isolated, closed-off group sort of settings within that space in each department where teachers can see through glass walls and be able to supervise students that are out in that space. At the same time, the students are getting some work done for what they need. There'll also be some quiet spaces available and even some small testing rooms for kids who may need to make up a test along the way. So we're really looking forward to having teachers utilize that space, having students utilize that space in a way that we've never had an opportunity before. And therefore, student learning can take place in a way it's never had an opportunity to occur in the past. Teachers can use that flex space, again, like I talked about with personalized learning, but we sort of envision a chance where teachers might say, if you'd like to read this article, for instance, you can go out in that space, read that article. If you'd like to talk about it or watch a video and talk about it with some of your peers, you can do it that way. I will be in the classroom providing instruction for those students that might want to get the information that way. So our vision is to really use those spaces that are going to be available to allow students to have an opportunity to choose how they want to learn it, the information. We also are hoping with our new spaces to grow a resource center tutor center combination that will also provide some enrichment and intervention for students. This would be a space where students can opt into it, maybe from a student prep or during an open hour that they have with our new schedule. And that resource center would be staffed by teachers in math, science, and English, and students would be able to get help ongoing all day long during the school day or an open period that they might have. We'd also, and again, this is part of the transforming part, like to staff that with some student tutors that are also available to assist their peers in some questions they might have on some of the work they're doing along the way. With our new schedule, the daily schedule, the bell schedule that Randy talked about briefly, we're also looking at a flex block similar to our collaboration time that we have today. We're hoping to provide more opportunities for accountability, more opportunities for students to work directly with their teachers on a kind of a signup basis, so to speak, if we can get that in place. And that would be a time, again, where students would have an opportunity to get some intervention by an invitation from a teacher or also receive some enrichment that they're seeking in terms of an opportunity to tutor some of the students or an opportunity to get further projects or anything the teacher can think of in terms of getting some kids some enrichment. The student prep was something we changed from a study hall to student prep over the last, I think this year or last year, we changed the name in hopes that we could get students to see that it's not just a typical study hall that we might have all grown up with, but a student prep is similar to a teacher prep in that that is an opportunity for students to prepare for their school day or to prepare for a test or to get ready for what's coming in the future for them, whether it be the next hour or a week from now. Our seven-period schedule has allowed us to have six periods be what we would prefer a typical student to take. That allows a student to have that open period or a student prep where they can get all of the things that I just highlighted. And again, in the past, with our six-period schedule, we haven't had that opportunity for students to get that extra intervention or enrichment. Our big hope for our transforming school is that we do have a quality system of intervention and enrichment in place for all students, and that we can really move towards a highly personalized learning experience for all students. And we are very excited for what our school looks like. Our teachers are on board, and the innovation and dreaming big is rampant. And we've had to scale back to make sure that what we implement is going to be successful. Because if we implemented all the ideas, it would be tough to get them all the work in one year. So that's why I use the word transforming to start with, because this is a work in progress and a consistent evaluation as we go to do what's best. Thank you.
I want to reiterate what Jenny just said about acknowledging the hard work of the planning teams and the design teams that has gone into all of the new programming that is taking shape. And I say taking shape because it's not complete yet. And so when it comes for question time, if you ask us questions and we say, we haven't made that decision yet, you know, that it's true. Some of these, we haven't done this stuff yet. We're in the planning phase for this. But it's really, really exciting. And I also want to thank the board and the district administration for all the support through this process. I am going to talk a little bit about advisory, link crew, college and career readiness, and capstone. So let's start with link crew. The notion of bringing two brand-new grades to the high school is intimidating for staff, and it's intimidating for students. We have to be very deliberate about the planning for this so we don't have kids slipping through the cracks. We need to make sure we have a safe and effective on-ramp for our new kids coming into the building, which will be 2,800 students when all is said and done. That's where link crew comes in. We have had five really dynamic staff members trained in the link crew program, and link crew is essentially a mentorship program where student, upper-class students mentor incoming freshmen. And in this case, incoming freshmen and sophomores. And so, and this will take place in a variety of different modalities, but largely in the advisory. And the advisory is a vehicle, as you'll see, for a lot of our programming to occur in. But link crew is made up of five trained staff, link coordinators, 200 link leaders who have been selected this spring. Each of those link leaders, either juniors or seniors, will be assigned anywhere from eight to 12 incoming freshmen or sophomores that they will mentor throughout the entire school year. They will be in advisory with those students. There will be a variety of social events with those students, mentor group meetings. And basically, it is all about transition, all about students, incoming students having a home base from the start, having a group of people they know from the start, having a leader, student leader, mentor them from the start, and making those connections right off the bat for community building. And just for confidence in the high school, how to do high school, how to not only be preparing for finals, but how to buy homecoming tickets? What's Spirit Week all about? You know, it's, there's just a variety of things that people come in, incoming freshmen, sophomores come in, they're not really aware of how this stuff works. And so that's one of the, those are some of the roles of what the link leaders will do. And the other key component about it is it allows our upperclassmen to, another venue for building their leadership skills and building the leadership skills of the incoming students. That will take place in the advisory. And when we look at our advisory, our advisory is a 30-minute period once a week where students will meet with their mentors as well as the advisory teacher. And for freshmen and sophomores, it will be largely about transition and ongoing support throughout the year, how to do high school. For juniors, it is largely focused on career and college readiness, the college search process, the application process, that kind of stuff will be more counselor-driven. And for seniors, it will continue that college and career readiness focus in addition to capstone work. In this next year, next coming years, it'll be senior midterm work, but also capstone work as we move forward. And I'll talk to you more about capstone shortly. So that is link crew and advisory. Now I'm going to jump over to college and career readiness, 612 scope and sequence. I brought some notes along with this because this is a really cool thing that I did not know a lot about before, a couple of days ago. And so I'm learning as well. And it's, it is, basically, we are aligning our college and career counseling model with the American School Counseling Association and really setting up standards from grade six through grade 12. And as I went through some of these, I was struck by how thoughtful and how powerful these will be in the lives of students, beginning with sixth graders. And this work is being led, by the way, by Susan Tennyson and our secondary counselors. But making a smooth transition into high school, students will plot a timeline for their past, present, and future. In other words, identifying where they are in their life as a sixth grader and looking forward. Define their dreams, and dreams will serve as the connection point for goal-setting. And so counselors and advisory teachers are talking to sixth graders about setting future goals based on their dreams, setting goals that can be measured, goals for a specific year. Seventh grade and eighth grade are largely like that as well, reemphasizing the importance of new yearly goals. But in eighth grade, students will learn their personality type by taking a career key survey. Students will identify what jobs match their personality types. So in eighth grade, not only are they building on what they think they see themselves as in the future, but also what their personality tells them about what careers might be a good fit for them. Grade nine, students start to understand, in addition to setting goals, to understand the importance of a resume and being able to sell their skills. Grade 10, students complete a DWY personality assessment and add three careers to their career favorites list. Students will learn how to search websites containing information about post-secondary institutions. Students will become familiar with the college boards and be working in their Naviance site. And they add at least two colleges to the colleges I'm thinking about list. So these are cool conversations that are developing as the students are developmentally ready for them. Grade 11, they begin to walk through the college application process with their counselors and their advisory teachers. Students will learn important details about their colleges of interest, such as campus life, academic programs, admissions requirements, visit college campuses, and continue to build and update their resume. And finally, grade 12, students learn the importance of keeping academic momentum in their senior year, which is, which is key, because sometimes that can slow during this senior year. And set up a senior to-do list, which they adhere to on a weekly to monthly basis. And then track scholarship and applications and revisit colleges which are a supermatch for their profile. So we're starting with building, identifying and building on your dreams as a sixth grader to all, going all the way through finding your supermatch colleges. And it's all a continued sequence of standards. And it really refines and sequences our approach to counseling. Lastly, capstone. As we begin the transition process away from May Term for All and move toward capstone, I know this is a conversation that's been ongoing as we've worked through May Term for All. We, our planning committee has been working all year on some standards for what capstone will look like. And I know the board passed capstone as a graduation requirement for freshman, incoming freshmen. And so that student will, that body of students will have the full experience, but we will be piloting some capstone work with our upper grades as well. This year's seniors and subsequent seniors classes until this year's freshmen come through will have the senior midterm experience, but we'll be injecting a little bit of the capstone work around planning and implementation. But I wanted to just go through the planning committee work just slightly about the competencies. Each capstone project will be required to have examples of inquiry. In other words, what do I want to know? What are my key questions? Research, students research and identify information related to their core questions. Collaboration, students will work on, students will work with an in-school mentor as well as out-of-school mentors on their project. And presentation, students will present the capstone research findings or products to an authentic audience, similar to the way the midterm, senior midterm products have been presented. And then reflection at each step along the way, reflect on what we are learning from this process. So capstone really is a way and into, for students to, in an individualized way, demonstrate their learning and extend their learning beyond the walls of the school. That is all I have.
So with that, we'll pause and see if the board has some questions regarding some of the work that's happening at the high school level.
I thought it was really exciting what you were saying about the 612 counseling experience. That, really exciting. So I guess my question is, how do you plug in some of those really great things for the kids who are past sixth grade already? So whether they're in seventh grade next year or in 12th grade next year, how can we still deliver some of those great things for those kids to help them get the advantages of the system outside of the sixth graders and under who will get the whole system?
As I understand it, the plan is to begin to inject these standards into our current counseling model beginning this fall for any grade levels, all grade levels.
And can, just to add to that, can kids go back a little bit? Like if they want to do the inventory from one of the grades that even though they're past, could they choose to do it, have access to that?
I would think that would be possible. I don't see why that wouldn't be possible, absolutely.
Thank you.
The language about match for college is grade language. And I-
The language about match for college is grade language, and I haven't heard it used as extensively as how you used it in this presentation. And it seems like the most appropriate language for guiding students as to what's best for them. It's a competitive community, and it's easy to become driven by what you see other students doing, which may or may not be the right choice for you. So thank you for that direction and for encouraging that positive outcome for every student.
Thanks for all your leadership, guys, throughout the spring, throughout the past years, and what's coming ahead is going to be dynamic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, members of the board and community.
Thank you.
Next, we have policy review. Regina, are you going to walk us through some of those?
I will walk us through. In general, on policy review, the changes as per many of the policies we take a look at are for clarity and ease of flow because we've had the opportunity to review them as a committee, sometimes twice. This is either the second or third review in the last several years. I do want to give a little bit more detail on a couple of them, but welcome questions on all that are up for review. So in terms of student, I'm going to start with just student discipline, 506. The policy on student discipline has had, in general, the policy committee is making a recommendation that this have a little bit more attention paid to it with some review and a deeper dive into the structure of the policy. The language from the Department of Education is fairly soft on this particular area. We recognize that the language in this policy is outdated and doesn't match a lot of the best practice in discipline, restorative justice, and positive behavioral intervention. That said, we need to schedule that particular review so the amendments that are being proposed right now are to work with this policy through the coming school year. We do have some language added in the first appendix addressing the scope of the policy. And I do want to point out some of the hate speech language that was proposed as draft. This is not original to the policy language. And in discussion and also with the advice of legal counsel, it was recognized that adding the language as proposed possibly weakens the policy in this particular area, and our goal is to strengthen it. So leaving the language as written probably gives this policy more strength. But I'll just pause there to see if there are any other questions that board members would like me to take back to the policy committee.
And part of that we also discussed, which Regina mentioned, was because we think that this needs to be revamped, and when there's a capacity for a full study to go in, we didn't want to add a lot of changes to it now to have it get changed again, maybe possibly next year. So if this is currently working as much as possible for the staff, then we were going to keep it as much as possible now and then do a full evaluation in the future.
So I have two questions.
Okay.
One, of course, this is called student discipline, and then it starts by saying the policy provides expectations for student conduct. So conduct is what we expect students, how we expect them to act. Discipline is what happens if they don't act consistent with that. So it, and if we're talking about restorative justice as where we're going, maybe we should just call it student conduct rather than student discipline. Just think about that one. And then when I go down to, what is this, D, 3D, we've added, right, we've added culturally and linguistically responsive teaching strategies. And it seems to me, so I question why, one, it's added because, two, doesn't a well-planned teaching or learning environment include culturally and linguistically responsive teaching strategies? And the other thing is, this is a student discipline section. This isn't really where we set out teaching parameters. So we're kind of adding what I think we don't need. Just a question.
Thank you. And we did have some discussion in some part around what are teacher expectations and student expectations? And to a certain extent, what we're moving to in our environment does include teacher expectations, that they go hand in hand, that sometimes the results that are seen in the classroom aren't necessarily just the product of that individual student. There could be environment. But we, I hear your point, certainly something that we will take back for more discussion.
And with the comment that you're going to be reviewing the entire policy in a different light, that's much as I have for tonight. Anybody else have anything on 506? All right, 515?
Okay. So on 515, a lot of thanks to Susan Tennyson for her work in assisting with revamping this policy and providing some edits. But basically, the disclosure of educational records in Section 6B2 is what's amended, just to adjust what goes on to a student's permanent record or is disclosed as a result of particular disciplinary action. That's the primary change in this policy. And I'll just pause there to see if there are any comments to take back.
So in layman's terms, tell me how this affects a student who, you know, makes a mistake in six, 12, say.
Mm-hmm.
What are we putting on records and not putting on records that could potentially, you know, cause them harm?
The discussion context for this particular section is not wanting to move away from appropriate consequences for action. That stays intact, recognizing that there is fluidity. And a lot of the policy is written to recognize that each situation is unique, but also not wanting to penalize a student for college admission or job based on a mistake made as a young person that is potentially, hopefully, is corrected and is not part of who that student is permanently. This is, of course, specific to individual circumstances. So this intentionally does not spell out specifically a rubric for what is included and what is not.
Okay. Good. Yeah, if we're looking at restorative type justice, I'm just wondering, you know, how we potentially damage the future. So you addressed what I was concerned about. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see here. Looking at 614. So 614, the policy is being partnered with teaching and learning because there's a lot of overlap in this particular policy on assessment. We did take a look at this at the May 15th board meeting. We're taking a look at it again now, and we may or may not be ready to move it forward, but we want to keep bringing this back to the board so that you can see what is adjusted. And we'll continue to take notes back to inform it. Thanks here to Donna Roper for providing a lot of support and feedback in the development of this policy. The goal is for, some of the notes that we have here is about alignment for teachers and departments regarding reassessment practice. This is a question that we've had from, in this case, from teaching and learning, but we've also discussed this through the policy committee. This is something that we will be continuing to review, and we don't have a specific answer right now, but the question is a good one. Another request that we hear with both committees and are working to address and will pass on to teaching committees to assist with clarification is the term assessment plan. And when is it appropriate to turn this over to a committee for particular specifics? At this point, at Donna's recommendation, what we're trying to address is who, what, when, how, and why. So that's the goal at this point in time. An additional question has been about community and parent input that's addressed in Section 3. So the goal is to allow for stakeholder feedback. We don't have a lot of specifics to find at this point, but that goal is intentionally placed in the policy to make sure that that placeholder is honored. So any questions on this round of review, recognizing that it may come back again? So we're not finished. But anything that we can take back to both teaching and learning and/or policy?
Not yet.
And our emails are available as well.
So Regina, has, so how are we thinking about this? Obviously, it's a standalone policy now, but is each site or each level also going to have a procedure or how is that being thought about?
So Donna, I would invite you, and I see you queued up, ready to go, if you can address that with more detail.
So it's not that we're looking for every site to create their own individual plan. It is that we want a district-wide assessment plan that has teacher voice embedded in some of the recommendations that we bring forward, along with partnering with teaching and learning and our grading practices committee to kind of evolve our assessment practices. So really, all this policy does is it puts in place the working committee and ensures that we're going to partner with teachers and bring forward the best plan possible and that it's an ongoing review. So it'll be reviewed annually. We want it to be very transparent and keep communication out to families so they know what we're doing. So really, that's all the policy is, is just putting in place the working committee to do the work.
Thanks, Donna. That's helpful. And so when do we believe the first iteration will be either implemented or started or completed, however you want to think about it?
So we will have a plan that has to be on the website by the first day of school. And so in July, we're bringing on a new high school principal, a new elementary principal. We want to review the changes that are being recommended right now. And then we'll bring it back in July for you guys to see what we land on. You know, we have to have a plan. We have to have a testing calendar, no matter, because there are a lot of assessments we're required to do. So it's just looking at what are some areas that we're going to do additional assessments in as a district because we have a need and a purpose to do that. And again, these are large-scale assessments. So they're, the plan is really addressing the fact that we're going to assess all kids in a grade level for a specific purpose and looking at how we can use that data more than one way possibly, if that's possible. So it's just really trying to be efficient and purposeful and getting data that's useful to moving learning forward as well as informing, you know, system progress.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions, input? Okay. Thank you, Regina. Next, we have our agenda addition, which is recognition of Dr. Dressen. And we get to change it up a little bit here. And all those times where you got to go up front and greet people, now you get to go up front for a minute here.
How painful.
It is painful.
Yes.
Is that the plan?
Yes.
Oh.
Here we go. Everybody, do you have all your parts? Who's got one right?
We all have our parts, people. I know we didn't deserve this.
Do you have us in order? How do you want us to do it?
Whatever order we stand in, we're going to work in.
All right.
And this is Rick's final, once-per-month meeting, right?
That's right.
That's what it is. And so the board has put together a short recognition of you in honor of your service to the district, and it is kind of quite minor in comparison to the work you've done. But it starts with, "Be it resolved that the school board recognize Dr. Rick Dressen for distinguished service to the Edina Public Schools, whereas Dr. Dressen has faithfully and with integrity, compassion, and great distinction served as superintendent of Edina Public Schools from July 2006 through June 2017." And?
Whereas Dr. Dressen has honored and advanced the mission of Edina Public Schools in order to serve every learner with a commitment to all for all. And?
Whereas Dr. Dressen has led the advancement of the next generation of Edina Public Schools, including the development of personalized learning experiences for all students to support academic excellence and a commitment to lifelong learning while supporting a team of educators in delivering quality instruction through collaboration and innovation. And?
Whereas Dr. Dressen has maximized and realigned district resources, including space, time, talent, and funding in ways that focus on the needs of the learner first, including leading the renovation of all district facilities to align with the evolving needs of learners and improve energy efficiency, and maintaining strong fiscal stewardship of the community's investment in its local schools. And?
Whereas Dr. Dressen has valued and advanced the district's commitment to racial equity and cultural competence for the benefit of all members of the school community. And?
Whereas Dr. Dressen has fostered effective and valued district partnerships within the Edina community and surrounding school districts through a national consortium of highly successful school systems and developed new international partners. And?
Whereas Dr. Dressen has remained throughout his tenure an enthusiastic champion of Edina Public Schools and a great ambassador for Edina students, families, staff, and community.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the school board of Edina Public Schools formally acknowledges and extends its profound appreciation to Dr. Rick Dressen for his many years of service to Edina Public Schools and its mission of education for all. Thank you. Congratulations. And we got you a little present, small, so that it wouldn't take up too much space, but you might want to hold that up. We've all signed it in the back. This is a photo that shows up in many of our materials, and it is one that whenever I think of Rick, this is what I think of him. I think of him as sitting down with kids, exploring, enjoying with children and education.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. We do have a certificate, but we have to vote on that later for action.
He did get pretty nervous when we changed the agenda without him knowing about it. You notice that? He was squirming a little bit.
He was thinking of the policy that says the chair and the superintendent set the agenda.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. We are on to our first action item, which is a participation fees. Can I get a motion to approve the fees for the 2017-18 school year for fine arts activities and athletic participation?
So moved.
Second. And Margot, do you have a short presentation on this? I think we had a discussion of this last month. You'll do a presentation, and then we have public comment, right?
Correct. And there are no changes since last month.
And basically, the new participation fees are set out in the materials. Are there any members of the public that want to comment on the fees? Hearing none. Any questions or discussion from the board? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the fees for the 2017-18 school year for fine arts activities and athletic? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, can I get a motion to approve the preliminary budget for 2017-18?
So moved.
Second.
Margot, I think you're up again.
Good evening, Chair Wallen Friedbrenn, Superintendent Dressen, and school board. And my gift to you, Dr. Dressen, would be to not do the presentation tonight, but I am required to do so.
Thank you very much.
So I want to thank you, the board, for your commitment to our financial position. We've been working on the 17-18 budget since at least last December. We worked with the Budget Advisory Task Force, Finance Committee, lots of internal work from administrators to staff to the business office. So a culmination of all sorts of partnerships and involvements into this evening's presentation. The assumptions, we updated our enrollment projections, and we do, looking at 17 or 16-17, our enrollment for this year is down just slightly, so that plays into 17-18 just a little bit. We're almost, well, now we're through the year, but at the time, I'm projecting and updating this for you, there's about one or two months that we didn't have in it. We did have the legislative session finish and had a 2% increase in the formula allowance for not only 17-18, but also for 18-19. We always appreciate any increases we can get from, in state funding. That is always helpful with our budget challenges. I will talk about that a little bit more in the presentation later. Special ed formula, we had major changes to the special ed formula in 15-16, have received final results of those just this last April, just a couple months ago, and so have incorporated that new information into 17 and 18 and beyond. Expenditure assumptions, it does approve your budget alignment plan that the board approved in March 2017, and implementation. approved in March 2017, and implementation of all the next-generation planning that we heard some about tonight, the high school schedule change, operational costs for increased square footage, such as utilities, et cetera, et cetera. Every other year, we have to plan for election costs, so that's incorporated in, and a variety of other expenditures. As we look at the revenue, the detailed worksheets, as you would, if you look at in the board packet, in the revenues and the expenditure areas, you'll notice some changes from sixteen-seventeen. Long-term facility maintenance revenue and expenditures are included now in the general fund if the project is less than $2 million. And so, you might see some changes in there that cause the data to, to go up or down depending on, on an annual basis, what those projects are. Just know that the revenue for long-term facility maintenance equals expense for long-term facility maintenance, so the overall impact on the fund balance is zero, but it does kind of skew the historical data just a little bit. So if you have questions on it, just let me know, and I can explain that piece. Also included in the expenditure assumptions are the additional cost for the start time change in terms of the bus purchases, and then also the additional drivers. Construction budget, we had a report earlier this evening on the construction overall and progress, and are happy to report again that 80% of the construction bids are complete. We do have, as reported earlier tonight, Valley View, Creek Valley, and Highlands to be bid this fall, and so that will provide a key additional piece of information for us. We have been prudently, fiscally managing our funds in terms of having contingency plans. Anytime, if you've ever done any sort of construction at home, you know you need a contingency plan, because never quite goes as you planned in terms of cost estimates. So we're, we are conservative with our contingency planning. We have maximized the use of bond funds in partnering them with the long-term facility maintenance funds while we're in the building, so the examples, as were reported earlier tonight, Southview, Cornelia, and partnering those. The unknowns that we have currently would be future interest revenue. We do know what we've earned so far. It depends how quickly or, or not that we draw down the, and pay bills. And interest rates, of course, play into that. Property sale, we have a purchase agreement. We actually have a resolution later on the agenda in that regard, but until that is complete, we don't know exactly how that's going to land yet, so that's, that's a variable. And then anytime we're doing site demolition in existing buildings, there's always an unknown the contractor's plan for it, but even with the, the 80% of the bids that are complete right now, we're, we're working throughout the summer, there may be some unknowns there. That's why we have contingency planning, but unless there's something beyond that, for example, asbestos. But, I'm happy to report we're on time and on budget, and continue to update with these unknowns as they become known throughout the summer and into the fall. So this schedule, and I won't go through it in too much detail tonight, just shows currently where we're at with the projects bid to date, revenues and expenditures, and estimated balance, then projects to be bid in the fall, and then grand total. I will make one comment, or a comment here, that the bond referendum revenue is higher than 124.9 million, if you're looking for that exact number, and that's because we list total revenues receive less the bond issuance costs, but we do not have the ability to tax taxpayers for any more than 124.9 million. So I just want to make a point of clarification, so that you're, you're aware of that if, if anybody ever asks that. So, that information on construction is included in the budget document under the construction detailed worksheets, but also combined in construction are, in that area, the way we're required to code by the state, is our technology levy, our long-term facility maintenance bonds, and the, the bond fund. So, I wanted to isolate and provide just specific information to our building bonds. In your budget document, we have an introductory section, an organizational section, financial section, and this year, for June, right now, we do not have the informational section other than the program descriptions. As of July 1, we are transitioning to a new finance system, and we are also updating and aligning our, our budget codes to more closely reflect the state accounting code system. And because of that, right now, the seventeen-eighteen budget is all on the old system, and, or not even on the old system, it's on spreadsheet right now, and we're waiting to convert it to the new system. So, we will add that information, as I told Finance Committee last week, as we get that in the new system, we'll add that and provide that information to you for sure. In the final budget, you'll have all the detail that you're used to seeing, and if you have any questions on anything in any more detail, please contact me. If you just want an overall summary, look at the executive summaries section. In the financial section, I would point you to pages 15 and 16, give you an overview on revenues and expenditures and estimated fund balances in two different ways, and then there's details for general fund and the other funds, providing some history. I will note that in seventeen-eighteen, just a reminder that we are using one-time sources of funding. This was part of our financial plan, that we've actually worked through Finance Committee for two or three years to set aside dollars in, assigned fund balance to prepare for the increased operational cost of the bond and also next-generation planning. And we've been fortunate enough not to have to use the assigned or committed dollars for federal Job Z funds. I believe we'll have to use those in seventeen-eighteen. So the combination of those are all being used in seventeen-eighteen. And that was part of our plan. And, so just keep that in mind as you're looking at some of the schedules, and when you just take revenue minus expense, it looks like a large number. Well, it's because we're using down, spending down some of our reserves, and that was part of the plan, in order to get to the fall of 2017, so for the referendum renewal and possible increase. The remaining of the charts provide some revenue and expense history of where we spend our dollars. We do spend, or receive revenue from the state, that's the majority where we receive from the state, and the second highest is property taxes. What I'd like to highlight here is that of this state money we receive, 55% comes from the general ed formula. That's the portion that when you read in the paper here on the news, you, school districts received 1% or 2% or, that's what we're referring to, so that when that's reported, it's not 1% on all of our revenues, it's not 1% on even all of our state revenues. And so, just want to make that point of clarification. Then, I, we, when, when we spend dollars, we spend them, we're service-oriented, providing services to our students. So as you would expect, expect, the major portion is our salary and benefits, just a little above 80%, and supplies and services, or purchase services. Then, of the salary area, we have a variety of types of positions that help support our students in their learning. Certainly, you would expect direct classroom teachers to be the, the largest portion, and then clerical custodian drivers, paraprofessionals, administration, and severance. Another way we look at our expenditures is by program area, happy to report that if we combine instruction and instruction, special ed, and instructional and pupil support, those areas that are either directly impacting our students or supporting our students were over 80%. And this slide is just a comparison back again to the 1% of state revenue that we receive is only a portion of our revenue. A 1% increase in expense doesn't correlate here, as you can see from this visual, roughly a little over a half million increase in revenue for 1% increase in state aid, and a 1% increase in our expenditures is a little over 900,000 in this example. And that becomes our ongoing challenge, because even though we were very fortunate to receive 2% in state aid this year, so let's say a little over a million dollars, or 1.1 million, expenditures go up, and we manage them, we annually monitor it, you know that, that's why we have a Budget Advisory Task Force, we make those hard decisions. You're at $3 million, and you're automatically, one, two, three million dollars out of balance on an annual basis, where we have to monitor that, and that's just part of what, not just Edina, all schools have to deal with. And this is a chart that shows, while we have received increases in the formula allowance, it does not include the most recent legislative session. It, the general ed funding formula has not kept pace with inflation, and while we are appreciative for the increases, it still lags behind. Another piece of information that has just come out in the last month or two is the actual 15-16 cost per student, or ADM, data shows by the program area, so regular instruction versus administration, versus support type areas, you can see those descriptions, and we have, we show Edinas than the late conference average and the state average. There can be very good reasons why we might be higher than, or lower than another state average, or the late conference average, or another district. It may be the fact that we receive some revenues, and we have some, revenue offsetting it, or it may be that that's the direction of the board, it's part of our strategic plan that we have, or vice versa in another district. So it just is a benchmark for us to look at and say, why might we be higher or lower than another district, and data to use. I couldn't do a budget presentation without adding the chart. So this is updated for seventeen-eighteen, and estimate, sixteen-seventeen, I did put some estimates for potential operating referendum renewal plus increases, just examples to show. We are spending, we, we had accumulated some fund balance, like I said, we are spending that down, but our challenge will be in eighteen-nineteen is restoring some of those dollars and maintaining fund balance in that area. And we, the next steps will be to monitor the audit and work through the summer to see where we actually end up for sixteen-seventeen. That always informs us what we need to do for the upcoming school year and beyond. Also, monitoring the enrollment and following, seeing how many students actually come through the door, and other areas as we work through the budget throughout the summer to provide you an update in the fall, and as we continue to go along. And this, you already saw earlier in a presentation tonight, but the comparison with other late conference districts in terms of operating referendum per student. So, as you can see, we're lower than the other late conference districts at this time. I would answer any questions that you have. Again, we will, I would ask for your approval, answer any questions that you have, and while that chart always shows a negative, and it's always going down, we annually review this, we balance well the excellence in programming and the excellence in financial management here in this district, and I very much appreciate that from, from you as, as a board, and, thank you.
Any questions? So I had a couple. One is, so I see that our special ed costs are consistent with the state average, but it looks like they're $232 more than the late conference average, and so, I just asked that you kind of go back and look at that and see if there's any reason why ours is, ours is higher. And I don't really need an answer today, it's just a request to kind of go dig into that. So that's one.
We actually asked about this at Finance Committee, too.
Oh, is that right? So you already have the answer? Or it's your, it's on your to-do list?
No, I, I, I have an answer, and Jeff is here behind me if.
I see him, he's nodding.
So, and I think there's a couple things. One, what I'd like to take a look at, which I didn't talk about at Finance Committee, is also look at the same report for 14-15, and maybe some previous years, to see if that's a similar trend, or if this has changed. The other thing is that 15-16 was the change in the special ed formula, which was a significant change, and we, and Jeff, myself, and a retired MDE special ed guru, for lack of a better term, he came in and we had him look at our expenditures and advise us on how we maximize and code and look at existing staff to make sure that we are maximizing state and federal special ed revenues. And so, some of it could be just that we recoded, didn't increase expenditures, but realigned and requoted some of that. But I would, would like to look at a little bit, a year or two of history on this report, just to see if that's a consistent trend, or it's unique to 15-16. Jeff, I don't know if you have anything else you would add to that at this time?
I think there's other, other things we have to take into consideration as well, which is our. Thank you, Communications Director.
Thank you, Communications Director Susan Brott, for pushing the microphone in my face. So I, I said I would, I would also consider just taking a look at our 287 intermediate district expenditures, as well as, those are high expenditures, and as, we, we are a district that is known to serve very medically complex students and do a very good job at it, we've had an influx of the number of students that are coming to us with, with those types of disabilities. And those are very expensive disabilities, and those average out across the board for all students. And so, while, as we, as we take a look at how we compare to other districts, it's also very important for us to take a look at the demographic being served by our district. And so, one does not equal one. In special education, is an adage that we oftentimes embrace, when we talk about taking a look at our expenditures that we incur.
All right, thank you. And my only other comment is for, for the Facilities Committee to kind of, I think that we're going to need to look at expenses as we go forward, even as we look at the operating levy, just to try to, as a general rule throughout our budget, kind of figure out ways of cutting expenses.
Facilities Committee, or Finance?
Finance. If I said facilities, I meant finance.
Okay, just wanted to clarify things.
Right, nope. Finance. All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the 2017-18 preliminary budget, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, we do have the Second Amendment to the purchase and sale agreement with Trammell Crowe. Can I get a motion to approve that amendment?
So moved. Second.
And, Margot, are you up again?
I just thought I'd stay here, that's okay. So, we have, last board meeting, we had an amendment for the purchase agreement with Trammell Crowe, and in the meantime, Facilities, Facility Committee members of the board met in a conference call type of setting presentation, just to have an update, gather more information from the, learn where they're at in the process. And in the meantime, a request was made to have an additional extension to the existing purchase agreement, opportunity to extend, it may not be needed. They actually requested two additional 30-day extensions, and so, as we worked with them, Dr. Dressen and myself, and with Barb Ross, our real estate attorney, we, the, and the Facility Committee members, the district offered one additional 30-day extension with $20,000 to be in addition to the purchase price, not inclusive of. And in, working with their attorney, they have agreed and accepted that, and so we're bringing it forward to you for approval. Anything additional? Did I miss anything?
Nope, sounds right. All right, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the Second Amendment to the purchase and sale agreement with Trammell Crowe, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next is a motion to approve, can I get a motion to approve the purchase of elementary classroom materials for reading?
So moved. Second.
And, Randy?
Do you want me to speak to all three of these? At once, kind of cluster these together? Okay, so quickly around the elementary classroom reading materials, this is a phase two of the adoption. This is, these items are all. This is, these items are all budgeted for, as are all of these items we're bringing forward to you. These come out of our capital allocation for textbooks and materials. This particular purchase is about expanding the classroom libraries, and what it would mean is 120 books for each elementary teacher across the district. It's to support independent reading time, and the selection of these books in terms of their levels below at, above grade level matches our data that we have on our students and the distribution of our students in our system. And this recommendation comes from our Language Arts Design Team, which is a team of teachers facilitated by our K-12 Language Arts Tosa, Caroline Lindit. The second one is for elementary classroom materials. This was presented at our last board meeting, again, budgeted for, this is for K-5 math. These are outstanding materials, they align to our personalized learning tenants of being competency-based or mastery-based. The recommendation comes from our K-5 math design team, which is an incredible group of teachers facilitated by our Teaching Learning Specialist Sandy Loger. They include materials, manipulatives, professional development, it's a two-year phase in, it would build upon the capacity of our teachers to implement these materials by allowing a one-year phase in by choice, and then the second year would capture all the other teachers who didn't come into that one-year phase in. There is a contract attached, it's a substantial purchase, the contract does leverage our power to lock in some pricing in case we need to order future materials. And then the last one is world history, materials adoption. We were supposed to make this purchase a few years ago, but we've been waiting for the publisher to come out with a current edition, and that was a choice of the design team. Again, this was a recommendation from a teacher design team, and this would provide students to have a book at home, and then we would share classroom sets at the school. So three purchases of materials bringing for board action this evening.
Okay, so for questions and discussions, we're going to take these one at a time. Are there any questions on the daily reading? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the purchase of the elementary classroom reading materials, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, any motion to approve the elementary classroom materials for math?
So moved. Second.
And same, any questions or questions for Randy? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the purchase of the elementary classroom materials for math, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, can I get a motion to approve the instructional materials for world history?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Any discussion?
Randy, is this, we didn't talk about this one in teaching and learning, so is this just an update on material that, essentially the same book just updated?
Yeah, it's a new edition, and they were, we've been holding off on this purchase until the author created that new edition, and that was a choice of the teachers. So it's literally a two-year-old materials purchase that now we wouldn't be able to access the online resources because they discontinue them, so we're trying to get the next current version.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those.
Question, question.
Go ahead.
So are these, these books in the classroom, I get the concept, kids don't have to carry them back and forth, but are they going to get destroyed pretty quickly because you've got potentially six different kids using a book any given day?
Our edina students take excellent care of their textbooks. No, it is, it's always a concern, it's something that we monitor, we do have extra editions, but we also have digital versions of it that can be used as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
One of the, I'll just add, one of the requirements is they do something called the high school binding, which is different than college binding, so they actually use more glue when they sell books to high school students than they do to college students. So we always purchase high school texts that have a high school binding to them.
That's, learn something new every day.
All right. All right, all in favor of approving the purchase, the instructional materials for world history, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve Policies 503, 509, 527, 611, and 713?
Do you want them combined?
They already are.
So moved.
Oh, I thought we had to combine.
No, they were presented as a combined motion. Regina, anything changed on these?
Couple of small updates, 509, resident enrollment and assignment, the appendix one footnotes are updated, which, thank you Stacy Geier, that's been on our list for a long time. More clear, 527, 5B, just clarification of language regarding the definition of handicapped disabilities and more appropriate usage of those terms as per discussion.
All right, any questions? All those in favor of approving Policies 503, 509, 527, 611, and 613, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the service agreement with Dr. Dressen?
So moved.
Any, so Amir, you had a question, comment, and maybe we should have dealt with this earlier, but.
Sure, I was shaping my, so it's 11 weeks, so it's part of the transition, it's not an ongoing consulting thing, it's not like a retire, rehire type contract, it's all just part of the transition, so I want to make that.
Correct.
That wasn't explicitly said earlier, it's through September 15.
Yes.
And it's up to 120 hours. So this is where I was, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it, so where did that number come from? Is that just because you have to have a cap? We don't expect necessarily eight-hour days, we are shadowing, right, that was a big no right there. So not going to be even likely, I guess, is that your understanding, too, it's not likely that we hit 120 hours? That seems like a rather robust.
Correct.
Amount of work, so this is just.
So in the meeting with Margot, Dr. Schultz and I, we talked about what was involved in additional work. We tried to say, okay, how long might it take? And then we built in a buffer so that we wouldn't have to, since it came before the school board, we didn't want to have to come back and say, we need two more days or whatever, so that was the assessment we got. Do I think it's going to be 15 full days? No.
No.
And Dr. Schultz did participate in the discussion, and in fact, as I said earlier, we held off getting into a discussion until he could review it, and we could get his input as to whether he thought it was important.
Yeah, and he's the only one who can initiate, I guess, exercise of the employee agreement.
Correct, it's at his request.
And it's not coming out of the operating budget, it's coming out of the construction budget. What would happen should at the end of our construction cycle, we have a small surplus? What happens to that money?
Surplus on the, on the 124.9?
So we would be glad to have that issue.
Right.
So we have an enhancement list growing. So it's things that were beyond the scope, but staff requested in the design process, and then we'd have a merit.
Similar to how we lowered our scope as we started to look at what the reality was with some bids, considering, okay.
And you might remember, you might remember that early on, there were things you might have liked to have done in some of the buildings, but we wanted to make sure that we had the money to meet all of the commitments to the projects further down the line, so we didn't just go ahead and do them.
Right.
But if there was an opportunity, even though they were coming in under budget, so the opportunity might come up to go back and hit some of those things.
I think that's about all, just some points of clarification, I think, to keep it from having some of those types of things, you'd have to go read the document to understand.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the service agreement with Dr. Dressen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, I need to get a motion to approve the recognition of Dr. Dressen.
So moved.
Any further discussion on it? I mean, we could go on, in all honesty, we could go on for hours, but in light of the time, et cetera, we will not.
You would not, too.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carried, and now I can actually hand over your.
Oh, thank you very much.
We didn't frame it for you.
Thank you very much.
She's got Susan's picture.
Budgets are tight. I was assuming that we got a picture earlier for the, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, any information? Yep, I got that.
No, we are just moving, it's the next phase of the year-round school for everybody but students. Staff are very engaged in learning. Randy, what do we have, over a half of our student, staff involved in district learning, we know, we also know there's another large group of staff that are back for ongoing graduate courses and learning of different types, very active with our leadership group as we transition in, including John Schultz, who's been very engaged in participating in our leadership work, so we're very excited about that, and I will again say thank you to the board here and to former board members, and thanks to the community and my colleagues for a wonderful run here. It's been an honor to serve in the footsteps of many great superintendents, including Ken Gregseth, and work with outstanding people. Public education still works, and it's really been an honor to be part of this journey.
Thank you. And we do have some recognition of staff at the end here, going to try to go through these, we actually have a lot of them, but there was a commendation of Stacy Solwald, who is a third-grade teacher at Concord Elementary, for her work with the students. There's a commendation of Bruce Baufans, Karen Bergman, Deb Trebis, and Betsy Downs, in relation to work they had done with helping a bus driver and a student who had a minor issue on a bus. We have a commendation of Rachel Minarich, Mark Carlson, Minarish, you know, I had pronunciations here, and I'm working my best. Mark Carlson, Jason Doctor, Julie Meiji, Jessica Lynch, Daniel Mollick, Florence DeBard, Mackenzie Kubista, Elizabeth Shane, Sean Dudley, Elizabeth Cornwall, Eric Low, Kent Downing, and Colin Bender. See, I did say we had a lot of commendations there for work that they did at Valley View, and we have a commendation of Nikki Karanda, who is a third-grade teacher at Coronelia Elementary, a commendation of Stacy Cavendish, Kirsten, Cavendish, Kristen Heiser, Zachary Baker, and Lori Docman, teaching staff at Creek Valley Elementary, and then a final commendation of Catherine Copani, who is an eighth-grade science teacher at Southview Middle School. And those are the commendations that we did receive. We appreciate the work of all of our staff and teachers, and I want to note that Al Bliss, who is behind.
Back there somewhere.
Back there, working there. He is.
We should have him walk out to the camera and.
Yeah, he is retiring, and this is his last televised meeting, and we would like Al to come out, and we want to personally thank him.
Here he comes.
There we, yes. All right, and with that, yes.
It's while we're on the updates and information, would you mind just, if anybody knows more about the open enrollment change or what we know or what we're waiting on from MDE, it's something I don't quite understand very well.
You mean the new, the legislation that passed?
That's right.
In regard to open enrollment?
I think we're still waiting to hear from MDE on their interpretation of it.
That's correct. How much they're going to defer to districts or what?
Well, so the legislation is one thing, it spells it out to a level, and then the MDE has to do their work on to say, how does it fall into the rule? And so we're waiting for that interpretation to spell that out. We would expect probably later this summer, Mary has been in touch with a person from MDE that's most closely involved with that work, and so we'll continue to monitor. It doesn't begin until the open enrollment period for 201819, but we've been in contact with the various constituents as well as our elected officials around this. But I would guess probably over the next 30 days, MDE will probably have some guidance for us.
It's a pretty good turnaround.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? I will request a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.